Good evening. It is now 6:30, and I'd like to call the Monday, February 13th, 2017 Burnsville Planning Commission to order. I do appreciate everyone's attendance this evening, and just as a quick reminder, there are TVs and audio in the hallway, but we do, we need to have the doors kept shut if we can during the, during the, during the meeting. Thank you very much. Our first item this evening is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, do you have any additions or changes to the posted agenda? None? None from Commissioners, staff?
I have no changes.
No, no changes. With no changes to the public, or to the posted agenda, I would stand for a motion. Moved by Commissioner Benkey.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, and the motion carries. Our second item this evening is the approval of the minutes from the January 9th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, any comments or changes to the minutes in our background? None from Commissioners, staff?
No changes.
No changes from staff. Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
So a move.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, and the motion carries. This brings us to our third item this evening, and this is a public hearing. Application is with the City of Burnsville for a planned unit development amendment for a building expansion and renovation to the Police Department and City Hall located at 100 Civic Center Parkway, right here. Ms. Dean, you have the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you Chair members of the Commission. So this is a planned unit development amendment for an expansion to the Police Department and renovations to City Hall. To give you perspective, while we all know we're here tonight at 100 Civic Center Parkway in our council chambers, but for the public, the City Hall is located just east of Nicola Avenue, south, south of 130th Street, and then Civic Center Parkway kind of snakes in between the larger Civic Center campus. The surrounding area is very residential in nature. We have R1 to the west, R1 to the north, and then there's a pocket of higher density, R3B PUD sort of to the, to the northwest. The site is also surrounded by school to the south, and then larger park property to the east. This gives you an overall aerial view of the current conditions. The City Hall was originally envisioned as a kind of master plan campus, and the garage was in existence as well as the ICE Center for this overall about 70-acre, larger piece of property. And then in the late 80s, the City Hall and Police Department were planned and approved and built as part of this larger campus area what you see today. I do want to note while we're on this slide, the majority of the work that is proposed is on the west side of the building adjacent to the existing Police Department, as well as on the north part of the building, and then some minor improvements to the exterior entry of the Police Department, as well as City Hall here. The parking lot area on the southeast portion of the City Hall campus will not be touched. There will be changes to the west lot and the south lot as referenced in your Planning Commission packet. This gives you a kind of zoomed-in view of the proposed site plan in addition. The primary goal of this addition really came out of a space analysis study that was done in 2014, and what that showed was a need for an expansion to the Police Department and renovation of that space, and how the Police Department uses that space for office and for kind of holding areas, ADA requirements. And so to bring it up to today's standards, a lot of interior modifications are being made, as well as a proposed garage addition of approximately 20,000 square feet. And this would house approximately 30 police vehicles, and that's primarily for the, the safety of the, not only the vehicles, but also the preservation of this asset that we have, police vehicles being part of our fleet. Other specific changes in this general area are mechanical rooms, a proposed recycling, trash, and organics collection area in addition, or modifications for a SWAT vehicle garage. Changes to the addition, or I'm sorry, changes to the entry of the Police Department, and cut off on this page would be the changes to the entry of City Hall. On the site plan, I do want to point out, if you recall from that aerial photo, there was an area of parking on that western portion. A majority of that parking will be now occupied with that proposed garage addition. There will maintain, we will maintain parking on that west portion of the property. We are proposing to use porous pavement within that area, as well as on what we're calling the south parking area. There is, I do want to point out, there is a reduction in the parking, and which will not be made up. However, there is overflow available across the street, and oftentimes, if there's a busy evening like tonight where overflow is needed, people are directed to park across the street near the garage and the skate park and ICE Center. You'll see that happen during trainings in City Hall or other special events. There are other changes with the site plan as well. Specifically, the, an access is added here. Currently, there's only one way in and one way out for police vehicles and employees, so the second access point will be added, and this will be for use of employees entering and exiting. Emergency vehicles will still use the, the existing access area. I should also point out, the porous pavers are, are planned. Currently, we have a sustainability feature, kind of a showcase area within that south parking lot. It's currently all porous asphalt and in poor condition, so as part of this project, we're using a, proposing to use an alternate infiltration material, and here's an example of what that would look like, and that would be used for the stalls itself. The drive aisles would be your typical asphalt because there's more wear and tear along those Utility billing and mailbox would still be located in the same area. This gives you an overall view of the proposed landscaping. 27 trees will be removed, approximately 24 will be installed, as well as additional perennials and grasses and low-growing shrubs. I should point out that when we were working with the architect, from a city staff standpoint, we're really treating this as any other application coming in, and when you look at the, this is zoned park, and when you look at the standards for the park zoning district, there really aren't specific design standards that are listed, and I think that the reason why is because many of the park shelters are your picnic shelters or ball fields, and there, there isn't that criteria. So when we were speaking with the applicant, or the architect applicant, we had mentioned that this was once zoned business. It was a B1 zoning district, and that those expectations in their building design and their site design should carry over, should really mimic the B1 zoning district. So it has that mix of landscaping that, that would be expected, as well as architectural style. I do want to point out grading and drainage. We did notice that there was an issue in the north part of the City Hall campus, water kind of pooling in, in the area, and so as part of this project, we're, we've worked with the project engineer, project architect, as well as our consultant engineer and engineering staff to come up with a solution to help out with, with that situation. So there would be a swale created, as well as some minor tree removal and brush removal to, to assist with that. One concern was that if that wasn't fixed, that there could be flooding within the new addition area for the, especially the SWAT garage area. Kind of the grand finale. This is the proposal of the, the architecture. What you can expect, this is the rendering that the architect provided. So you have the proposed garage addition here, approximately 20,000 square feet again for the approximately 30 vehicles. We do have a mix of materials, brick and precast, as well as windows to, and the architect can probably better speak to this, but really it blends in and fits the existing design. It would, I would say complements the existing design of the building. This is the rear of the building, and then the front entry area. The plaza that exists today with the benches and pedestrian scale lighting will remain, as well as bike parking that's on site. However, the entry features will be dressed up, and there will be separate entry for your general customers, and then people that are other customers that might have extended stay would leave out this entry. The, the City Hall will also receive a, a entry modification to help complement the Police Department entry. We're proposing that it be a bronze, brown color to complement our existing city branding. And this gives you just a closer view of the proposed modification. Again, this is a planning and development because the addition exceeds that 10% threshold of the existing building cube. That's one, and two, because of the off-site parking needed for overflow. Staff does feel that there are benefits to approving this PUD, and those are that it's consistent with the use of the previous approvals, that the building addition and design is complementary and consistent with the existing architecture style. The garage addition will provide that protection for the police vehicles. The proposed changes to the, the parking lot, the west and that south parking lot do use porous pavers, which is a sustainability feature and highlight, really a showcase. And the proposed addition will also include space for trash recycling and organics to help meet the city's sustainability goals. Staff does recommend approval, and with this approval, we're recommending that the existing conditions shall remain in full force and effect. We do have the architect available, as well as Brian Hill Gardner, to answer any engineering or architect-type questions.
No architect.
No. Garrett Back, who's the project manager for the city in our Parks and Recreation Department, is also available to answer any questions as well. With that, I'll open it up to questions from my standpoint.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I appreciate your time. Commissioners, questions of staff? Commissioner Libby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Police Department personal parking, their cars, where does that go?
Yep, so that will remain on the, the west. It's highlighted as the west portion of the property, so employees such as Patrol Investigations, Records people, they will either park on the west portion of the parking. There are some spaces on the north parking, as well as all of the City Hall parking that is not being touched is available for all, all employees.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions of staff? Commissioner Benkey.
Ms. Dean, to go on with that, the existing parking is 226. The proposal is 195. Do we know how many extra, how many surplus spaces we have across Civic Center Parkway?
I did not provide that analysis, did I? I don't have that prepared. I'm sorry.
Okay. And I know that in the past, there's been a lot of discussion about the 50% perimeter landscaping. Now, that does not apply in this district, correct?
Right, so technically, it would not apply because the Park District does not have that standard. However, the new addition portion would exceed that requirement at 65%, and bringing the overall site in closer compliance with, if we applied that standard.
I know this is coming, well, I guess the biggest thing here is, we found that the porous paver, the porous asphalt is not really performing. Is, is the porous paver a demonstration again, or a test? Is this something that we're going to be encouraging elsewhere in the city?
I could comment to that, Commissioner Benkey. There is porous pavement, all of the, the, you know, attempts to become more green-friendly and try to infiltrate water. A lot of the things have come a long way. So the new, the new typical sections, the base material, the rock, the porous material that drains, has improved dramatically since this was put in. Not only that, but the paver itself, as far as maintenance and cleaning. So I would not call this an, an attempt to, you know, the same thing as what it was before. We looked at this seriously, as how much water can infiltrate. This is a large wetland complex or stormwater complex to the east of the building, and we surely don't want to have that overflowing or anything that nature. With that said, there is an overflow, an emergency overflow to 130th Street that would allow the site never to flood into the building itself. But back to the original question, the new, the new porous pavement materials that are used, I'm confident that they're going to work substantially better than what's out there today.
Very good. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Dean, the area where the, where it could be done is zoned park. This is a park area.
Correct.
But you mentioned that for the, for the work to be done, police station, the expansion, and the entrance to the City Hall will follow business, like a B1 district, and this park was once a B1 district. How far are we going to go when you say B1 district? Are we going to fully have everything done B1 district way, or are we going to go partially?
Our goal is to get it as close to a B1 standard as possible, and, and we did that, our direction to the applicant or architect when we were working with them. I'm thinking of them, even though they're consultant technically to the city, but the applicant, our direction has always been follow the B1 standards. Here's the architectural review tool. Take this, analyze it, because this is what we're going to weigh you against, and I think they did do a good job of really complying with the standards as much as they could, taking into account it's an existing building, it's an addition, and, and really trying to bring it up to conform as much as possible to that, that B1 level. Kind of going above and beyond.
Thank you very much. We do have high standards for B1 district, and if we, if what the work to be done here will be consistent with the B1, then I think that, that would be very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Dean, I have a question in reference to, you talked about shared parking over by the garage. So is this all platted, or what is, help me with the property itself.
So in 2004, I believe, as part of a, actually, there was, city had done a analysis about its commercial properties, and when they were doing that, there was a moratorium, and when they were doing that, some residents had some concerns that the city was going to be developing the property and, or possibly selling it off to a commercial developer and, and maybe building a McDonald's, or, you know, some sort of a commercial retail-type component, and the city said, no, 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 that is not our intention. This is a City Hall campus for, you know, public-type facilities. And so the city rezone, in a reaction to that, the city re-zoned the property from B1 to, to park, and reguided the property to Park and Recreation. And as part of that, it was discovered this property, the whole 71 acres has never been platted. So at that time, and I believe it was '04, the city replatted the property in conjunction with that. So this is one lot highlighted in red, 21 acres. This, maybe I should go to this property here. So the hatched area is one lot. This area to the south of Civic Center Parkway is the garage and ICE Center and the skate park. This is another parcel, the school, and then other park land. I don't know the specific name of the park, I apologize, but basically trail, open space, and ice rink area. So they are separate parcels, and so it is technically considered off-premise parking since it's a separate.
Lot.
Lot.
It all, it all has been platted?
It all has been platted, correct.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions for Ms. Dean? Thank you. Commissioners, questions for Garrett, or for Brian?
Good.
No? Okay. I would stand for a motion. Oh, it is a public hearing, I'm sorry. Forgot all about that. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue to please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one sprinting, oh, wait a minute, yes. Sir, please step up to the podium and give us your, your name and address for the record. Thanks for coming this evening.
You're welcome. Greg Maury, 18 Geneva Boulevard, Interlocken Runts. Looking at the roof line, is the proposed architectural additions capable of supporting a large solar array, for example? You got a tremendous opportunity. I mean, you talk sustainability in terms of garbage removal and so forth, and while that is an important step, literally, I estimated 100, 200 kilowatt array could sit on top of the building if the structure could support, you know, pound per square foot type of thing. So my question to you, and so, you know, kind of being suggestive to the commission, is entertaining that. Because at the end of the day, the energy's the more sustainable aspect of it all, since we all depend on it.
Ms. Dean.
I would have to turn to the architect and to the project manager to see if that was something that was perhaps considered as part of the planned addition. I don't know whether either of you want to step up.
Evening, Commissioners. John McNamara, World Architects. We have not planned at this point in time for a solar array on the roof. It is certainly something we could chat with our client about as to whether or not it's a worthwhile thing to add into the project, but to answer your question specifically, no, it's not designed for that at this time.
It wasn't designed to, to hold that weight.
A solar array, no.
Where does the HVAC and so forth go? Is that roof-mounted?
No, there is a mechanical room inside the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Anyone at all? Thank you. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, your, your thoughts? Commissioner Benkey.
I'd like to recommend, the Planning Commission recommend approval of the concept development stage PUD amendment application for the City of Burnsville for a PUD amendment for a building addition at Burnsville City Hall and Police Department located at 100 Civic Center Parkway, subject to the following conditions. First one, conditions previously approved PUD shall remain in full force and effect, and without talking to anybody else, I think we should suggest that council consider Mr. Maury's comment, and add a second condition, simply suggesting that we look into that as a future use for the roof.
Thank you. Commissioner Benkey, we have a, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, and the motion carries 5-0. Thank you. That'll be in front of the City Council on the 21st. That brings us to number four. This is also a public hearing with Bereen Baptist Church application for a conditional use permit amendment for a 29,977 square foot church addition, including a new 1,046-seat worship space auditorium, variance, and preliminary final plat for a two-lot subdivision to be known as Bereen Baptist Edition, located at 309 County Road 42. And presenting this evening is Mr. Brixus. Thank you for coming, Al. Dev is out of town, and, and we appreciate you stepping in and presenting this evening.
Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be back.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. As, as identified, we are dealing with a number of applications, conditional use variance, and a plat procedure. The subject property is located at 309 County Road 42, at the corner of County Road 42 and 45th Street. The site consists of approximately 17.6 acres. It's zoned R1. Within that zoning district, churches are considered a conditional use permit. There's been a long history associated with this, starting in 1963. This site was approved for, originally approved for the church. They have subsequently received approvals in '63, '65, '68, '74, '82, and '86. In '86, they did a larger concept plan for the entire site that included ultimate phases for development. In 2000, they received a conditional use permit for the larger assembly area that currently exists, of 44,000 square feet, and now with, with this addition, they're looking at filling out the last phase of development. This expansion is larger than the '86 concept, but, and as such, it's being processed. This is a continuation of a public hearing. In January of this year, a number of neighborhood open houses were held as a means of communicating to the adjoining neighborhoods and soliciting their input as far as overall design concerns, issues that needed additional attention. Part of that has been submitted to you as far as comments in your packet. The site currently exists in three parcels, as illustrated here. The conditional use applications include a application for the church itself as a land use within the R1 district. They're asking for flexibility on the building height exceeding 30 feet. They're asking for flexibility on the building height exceeding 30 feet. What's being requested is 41 feet, four inches. This is also a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit for a standing seam roof material matching the existing roof is being requested in the R1 zone. This is a third conditional use permit. To allow parking lot use with, on Lot 1, Block 1 in the R1 zone, the use is not listed as a permitted or accessory use. This is also, within the R1 district, allowed as a conditional use permit. To allow grading work in steep slopes in excess of 18%, up to 40%, grading can be done by conditional use permit. Also, conditional use permit for a special-purpose fence in excess of eight feet in height, and to allow a special-purpose fence on a front yard, which will be along Plymouth Avenue. And to allow, they're also asking for a conditional use to allow fewer parking stalls than may be allowed by or required by code. Two variances are being requested. One is for the sign along County Road 42. As far as, once this is platted, additional right-of-way is being requested by the county, and the existing sign will become legally non-conforming. They're asking for that to be established or permitted by variance. Secondly, is to allow on Lot 1, Block 1, a secondary parking lot for the church. There's no principal building on the site. This conditional use permit would be, to allow this to locate on the site and be tied back to the church facilities. Finally, the city is requiring the three parcels that currently exist to be platted. In the past, these have not been formally platted or subdivided, and as a result, the existing streets exist as easements, and the property descriptions exist in meets-and-bounds description. Through the plating process, we'll be creating two lots and formally dedicating the necessary streets and an additional right-of-way for County Road 42. I would like to start out with the plat procedure because it's the most straightforward. Everything else seems to be a little bit more controversial. In plating this, you can see that there's three parcels. The total area of the combined three parcels is 17.6 acres. Plymouth Avenue, which runs through the parcel, is a existing easement in this configuration, as well as 42nd. With the proposed plat, the preliminary plat will dictate or dedicate the streets for both 45th Street as well as Plymouth Avenue, and there will be a dedication along 42nd Avenue. This shows the proposed site plan in conjunction with the proposed preliminary plat. You can see on the western lot, they are proposing this additional parking lot, which does not have a building in support of that arrangement. This represents the final plat, again, showing the right-of-way dedication for Plymouth Avenue, 45th Street, and the requested additional right-of-way for County 42. I'd like to go back once quickly just to show you that this is the location of the sign, and with the dedication that's being proposed, the setback that currently exists disappears. They're requesting a variance for that flexibility. When we talk about the two variances that are being requested, one for the sign, one for the parking lot, a variance is made, is based on findings that the use of the property, it provides for reasonable use of the property, and there are practical difficulties associated with the site that are unique to the property that create the need for variance. In this case, the plating of the property now separates these lots where previously Lot 1 and 2 were one property and could be built without a variance. The dedication of the right-of-ways for 45th Street and Plymouth Avenue are now separated, creating the need for the variance in this case. This public, this is a public action that's being mandated by the city, and as such, we feel it's a rational or practical difficulty that justifies a variance. Secondly, the dedication of additional right-of-way for County Road 42 also provides a situation where the setback is being reduced through public action, and again, we're supportive of that variance. Now on to the expansion. As I indicated before, in 1986, there was a planned phased expansion of the church. What's being proposed here is a larger scale than what was anticipated in '86. In 2000, the city approved a conditional use to add 44,000 square feet of assembly in its classrooms. With this addition, what was being proposed is a building addition that will occur at the southwest corner of the existing building. This wall along the southwest is an EFS construction with the, was planned in anticipation of a future expansion of this building. The balance of the building is primarily brick in nature. This shows an aerial view of the perspective of the new addition. You can see the new entryway, the larger assembly hall. You can tell that the building height is being, is being proposed. The building height is proposed to be 41 feet, four inches. There has been some discussion about trying to lower that. The Apken's architect says that this height is ultimate, optimal for the proposed assembly use, and is proposing or requesting that it be compared or approved by the conditional use permit. It is approximately four feet taller than some of the other areas of the building, but fits within the larger scale of the architect. The proposed tallest building is approximately 90 feet away from the nearest residential property, 94 feet, to be more precise. Additionally, there's been questions as to whether the city has other buildings of similar nature, and according to research by the city staff, 57 buildings, including other churches, measure more than 40 feet in height. So this is not atypical or has, is not a unique situation for this type of use. The fire department has examined the height of the building and does not feel that it's a problem as far as providing fire service, and that the setback is greater than what's required by code. This represents a ground view of main entrance perspective of the church. You can see the proposed building materials. This is stepping in. You can see where the common area is, looking out over through the glass windows, the Worship Center, the additional seating area, and Worship Center, Sanctuary. What's being proposed here with this expansion is that they're increasing the capacity, the seating capacity of the proposed building. Got to find my notes. Capacity is increasing from 980 to 1,604 total capacity within the Sanctuary and the Worship Center. This is an increase of 624 seats. Another view of the larger Worship Center. Site plan is illustrated here. It shows the expansion of the building on the southwest corner of the building. There will be new parking proposed in this area. This requires the removal of an existing stone tiered retaining wall and grading in this area that will cut this slope and will remove some of the existing mature vegetation. The proposed parking lot on, across Plymouth Avenue provides another 103 parking stalls with proof-of-parking of up to 44. This has been changed and reviewed in response to comments from the neighborhood group. They've aligned, they aligned the entrance for these two to provide a full intersection, provide pedestrian crossings, and ax, pedestrian access all the way to the building. There's a loading area in this location right here. Concerns were expressed over the appearance of that. This area will, will have a door that's, that's been identified as being similar to a, a single residential garage door, single car garage door. It will be an elevated dock. The whole idea of that is to have the truck surface to be on an equal level of the floor for rolling or moving materials rather than having to lift them up into the, into the Parking required here for the total here is approximately 1,000, 1,051. What's being proposed here will have a total of 886. They've asked for a conditional use permit to allow for reduced parking supply. Staff is not favorable to this conditional use. Rather, they believe that the parking should be based on what the building code requires for seating, based on the building inspector's determination. So additional parking will be required, and that's identified as a condition of that This site plan shows the location of retaining walls and fences, and also the setbacks. You can see here that the setback between the building, right, the building expansion will maintain a 190-foot separation. The current building is 174 feet off the south property line. This expansion will bring this building closer to the buildings 208. The setback will be approximately 94 feet to the property line and 138 feet to the actual building corner. This area right here will bring the parking within 23 feet of the residential lots. This is a significant slope that will require a retaining wall in this location. Additionally, they're requesting to put a screen fence along this edge of the parking lot, and to take that screen fence even up Plymouth Avenue. They requested a 10-foot fence. Again, staff is not supportive of a 10-foot fence. Eight-foot would be allowed within this district. Also, the conditional use for a specialty fence in this location, which is a front yard, would have to be approved. Additional fencing is also proposed in this location. The highlighted areas represents areas of significant slope, and you can see that in this area, we have very steep slopes that are going to be modified in, in an effort to provide the parking and additional screening. Additionally, we have significance of very steep slopes in these areas of the proof-of-parking area. The grading plan requires that in these areas, by conditional use permit, they have to meet best management practices and be approved by a certified engineer, and that would be demonstrated as part of the overall conditional use permit. Brian, can I ask you to speak a little bit to the grading and drainage?
Absolutely. Commissioners, with the grading in general, again, there's not a lot of change as far as impervious surface goes, other than the new lot. There is some modifications, as Al mentioned, down in the south portion of the site. So there's not a lot of grading that's going to be occurring. It'll be existing conditions that are out there. In general, that area that Alice is pointing to right now flows from north to the northwest. It's captured through C, catch basin structures. It will be entering into a underground pond storage at that location, and will ultimately overflow across the street into another storm sewer complex, and it'll ultimately get to that pond just to the south of 145th Street. Any of the new stormwater runoff created by the impervious surface on the western lot will be, again, gathered up into storm sewer pipes and placed into that pond. That pond was designed originally to be expanded to accommodate the stormwater, so it will be, they will be expanding the pond. It won't be in its existing condition, so as a part of this project, they will be expanding that pond as well. So essentially, the improvements necessary are underground ponding storage on the east side to minimize rate control, and then also the non-expansion on the west side.
Right here represents the underground system that will be collecting that stormwater.
One thing that I will mention is in the proof-of-parking area, there is, as a part of the city's stormwater management plan, there is an infiltration requirement. So if they were to expand into that area, they will have to prove with the soils that they have via soil borings that that soil can accommodate the infiltration rates necessary.
The Apken has provided the building elevations. Building materials, the, we currently have an existing metal roof on pitch roof. The Apken is asking for the conditional use to match that on the, on the assembly hall. Other materials include solid metal doors, overhead doors for the loading area. Exterior walls will be brick, EFS, aluminum windows, the door systems, translucence panels. As I indicated earlier, in 2002, the southwest wall was of EFS design, and that will be changing as we move through this and becoming a more permanent structure. This represents the different materials that are going to be used. It's going to be primarily brown with a sandstone tan as a complementary color. This represents the layout of the existing building. Landscape plan. You can see that what's being proposed is an extensive landscape plan with primarily focus along the south property lines and southwest areas. This will, this area will also have areas of significant tree removal. More mature trees will be gone, but what's being proposed is a combination of screen fence in these areas as well as landscaping on top of a significant topography. Down in these areas, existing trees will be supplemented with pine trees, conifers that are six feet in height. In these areas, the proposed pine trees will be 10 feet in height with a dense combination of both conifer and deciduous trees throughout these areas. Additional landscaping is being proposed as replacement landscaping for the areas around the parking lot on the west side of Plymouth Avenue. In addition to the overstorey trees, understorey shrubberies is also being proposed as a supplement or under, provide additional screening. This area, you can tell, is heavily wooded, and with the introduction or expansion of the parking lots, these trees will be removed. The city has a tree replacement policy. Currently, there exists 962 significant trees. 431 trees will be removed. They have a proposed value of $163,962. The city requires a 1.5% replacement, so that would come out to be 245,943 trees. With the landscape plan, as illustrated here, the replacement value is approximately $58,235. So the other replacement that will be paid to the city would be $187,708. Additionally, associated with this area, the condition is that the city's forester take a look at the area for determination of oak wilt to make sure that any diseased trees would be removed as part of the overall plan arrangements. Additionally, the Apken has provided these elevations that show the plantings at time of installation versus maturity. And you can see the differences in these locations. This represents the proposed fence that's being used as far as a screen fence. As I indicated earlier, as a condition of approval, we would like to keep this at no more than an eight-foot height. We're agreeable to the locations. Some of the conditions that we've included as part of the recommended approval is proper staining and painting of the fence. This is looking from the south to the north toward the church. This is the existing condition. This is the... This is the condition with the planting of six-foot-high evergreen trees. The applicant has provided a sign area. According to our code, we allow for these to have up to twelve percent of the wall facade in wall signs. What's being proposed here represents two hundred and ninety square feet or four percent of the wall facade, which complies with code. With the monument sign variance, all signage will meet, meet city code. The lighting, we have received the photometric lighting for both the, the east site as well as the west site. You can see here that what's being proposed as far as lighting is ninety-degree cutoff, shielded luminaries. The lighting does meet all code requirements as far as where it abuts residential. It does not exceed point five-foot candles. Finally, as part of the review, the applicant has submitted a, a traffic study for the entire church site as well as these, these configurations. The applicant's traffic engineer is here tonight. I won't expand on him. Brian, if you had some comments, I would...
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I can just tell you that my traffic study was done. We reviewed it. They looked at three different conditions and existing conditions that was taken back this summer as well as an opening date condition and then a future condition of 2036. I won't go into too much detail, but I can just tell you that the attendees for those at the existing condition in a peak service was six hundred and eighty-four attendees in the existing condition, nine hundred attendees in the opening date condition, and then up to one thousand, one hundred attendees in the 2036 application. The traffic study did indicate, obviously, there will be some traffic concerns. However, there was not any other than the forty-two intersection that would require modifications. In the initial opening date, the modifications to the forty-two signal would have to be monitored. Dakota County did review the study as well and did comment that the applicant will be responsible for any timing, signal timing changes that might be necessary. The city engineer did inform me that there is a new fiber optic line being installed along forty-two that is going to help out with this entire corridor for signal timing. So the, the timing, I guess, for that is, is, is good. In addition, one of the, one of the parts of the traffic plan that was evaluated was looking at this traffic management plan. On this figure here, the green dots represent people that would be out there managing flow of this traffic. In addition, modifications were made to the entrances. They reduced one entrance on the east side of Plymouth Avenue, again, to kind of try to create that counterclockwise movement. So I think the applicant has gone through and, 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 you know, evaluated a study, submitted what, what the city needed for its review. And again, I'll let the applicant's engineer go through the, the study in more detail if there's questions on that.
The final element that I have here and I'll again let, is this crosswalk arrangement. Excuse me, let me go back. Crosswalk at Plymouth Avenue connecting the parking lots, bringing it into a pedestrian corridor all the way to, to the church. Sightlines for that church, for that crosswalk have been shown here. You can see what, what's being proposed, stopping minimum distance. We've reviewed this. A conditional use permit is, is a use that's allowed within the district if certain conditions are, are met and satisfied to mitigate potential problems. We believe that the, the applicant has addressed those elements. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions that are outlined in your planning commission report and shown here, that the conditions of the previous conditional use permits remain in full force. Condition that Lot One Block One not be sold unless alternative parking be provided elsewhere and approved through a conditional use permit. Woodland replacement in amount of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one, seven hundred dollars shall be provided and paid to the city for off-street tree plantings as determined by the city forester. The applicant shall meet with the city forester prior to work on Lot One to identify diseased trees and establish protection measures for the, the trees that are to be saved and to avoid spreading oak wilt. All plans for grading within the steep slopes shall be certified for slope stabilization. Grading plan shall be revised to include the proof of parking area of the lot so that it's available for future park design, or parking design. Maximum height of the proposed fence not exceed eight feet. The privacy fence be stained or painted. Plans shall be revised to provide all parking spaces on the site based on the total occupancy determined by the fire marshal at the time of building permit. Traffic study be updated if additional stalls beyond nine hundred spaces are required and the study shall be implemented per the approval of city engineer. The applicant shall pay for all traffic management improvements associated with the expansion, including but not limited to the city county streets that are required because they increase the traffic, traffic, or city, excuse me, church improvements, signage, striping, pedestrian crossings on Plymouth Avenue, hiring Burnsville Police or private firm for traffic control during operations. Follow-up traffic study, the follow-up traffic study shall be done by the applicant after improvements are completed to gauge their effectiveness. The study shall analyze Sunday morning and weekday evening services and events during months of October and through March. Recommendation, the traffic study shall be implemented per the approval of city engineer. The applicant shall provide information on the engineering design to ensure infiltration requirements associated with the shoreline ordinance are met for parking lot on Lot One Block One. If infiltration requirements cannot be met, alternative method must be provided. The plan shall be modified as necessary to make provisions for water supply systems to meet the fire marshal's water protection requirements. Enter into a development contract and post a seven hundred, excuse me, seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars of securities to ensure prior to releasing the final plat. Shall meet with the Dakota County Plat Commission Surveyor for the proposed plat and the applicant shall pay outstanding escrow balance for processing the application before the release of the milers for recording. That is my conclusion. We have a representative of the church, Eric Rose, and his traffic engineer available. He, they have additional presentation materials.
Thank you, Mr. Brixis. Staff, any questions of Mr. Brixis before he turns over to the Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brixis, at the last planning commission meeting when this matter came up, I think it was agreed that, the matter was put on hold so that the applicant can have, I think, at least one other meeting with neighborhood residents and those concerned to share plans and to have discussions. Can you throw any light if that was done and what was the outcome?
Three neighborhood meetings were conducted on the January fourth, the seventeenth, and twenty-third. We did receive comments through those meetings. The revised plans attempted to address the specific concerns. At the back of your packet, under city's planning considerations, some of those issues were maintenance of the property, losing significant trees or screening due to the proposed expansion, additional traffic concerns. I, I believe what's been submitted tonight is, is accumulation of, or a response to those, those comments to their best efforts.
Was there any consensus from those attending the meetings that they were satisfied with what the applicant planned to do to meet their concerns?
Commissioner Singh, I think you're going to find out through the public testimony tonight. I, I don't know, the, the plans were submitted after the meetings, so to the full, the full presentation of the revised plans are this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For my benefit, what does proof of parking mean?
Proof of parking is an area that can be constructed into additional parking when needed. It stays in a, a green state until it's determined that parking is inadequate and then they're mandated to bring it up to code as a parking lot.
Okay, thank you. The additional parking lot west of Plymouth runs east and west, extends east and west. I drove by there this morning and looked at that area closely. Could not that parking lot have been north and south with Plymouth Road moving west? So there is no need for pedestrian crossing? That area in a dark night or in a storm, I can see hazardous people walking across that street as a safety hazard. Can that be moved around accordingly?
I think, and I'll go to Brian.
Yeah, I can comment on that. Commissioner Levy, we, we did not evaluate per se shifting Plymouth Avenue to the west. I think that's what you're, you're recommending. We did not look at that. The plat that was proposed, we again separates two lots and with Plymouth Avenue remaining in place. It's not to say it's, it could not, it could be evaluated. We would have to look at, at the intersection point of, we'd have to look at the intersection of Plymouth Avenue and one forty-fifth there to, to see how that all works out. So I, I can't answer that question right now, but I guess it was not evaluated as a part of this supplemental.
I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Br, Mr. Workman? Commissioner Workman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Brixis, for the presentation. I just wanted to clarify a few things. The expansion's been on the books since nineteen eighty-six?
That's correct.
To this scale or just expansion in general?
Expansion in general. This is the, what's being proposed through the two thousand and this addition is larger than the eighty-six, what it was anticipated eighty-six.
But there's always been plans to expand. The additional overflow parking, the satellite, that does take a dip down, are they going to bring that to grade with Plymouth Avenue upon completion or will that be set where it sits now?
I can answer that one. They will match, the, the access point will essentially match up to Plymouth Avenue. Everything still will fall off and drain to the northwest where, where the storm will be captured by catch basins and put into that pond. But there is no changes or no, no changes to grade to Plymouth Avenue itself. It'll be connecting on that grade.
And then with that satellite parking, is that entire area going to be cleared out or will there be some retention of the woods that are there now?
I think we'll let the applicant respond to that. I think, I, I think where the proof of parking is, I would believe they're probably going to leave the trees for now, but maybe it would make sense for them to remove it now. I think we should let them respond to that.
I think as a condition of the, that's outlined in the recommendation is that we're looking to get the proof of parking graded at this point. I believe everything within these, these grade lines, you'll see removal. There'll be, the landscape plan does provide for some additional replanting in these areas, but they, but the grade lines are likely to represent what's, the areas that are, that will be impacted as far as tree removal.
By and large, that area will be...
Yes.
...cleared.
Yes.
And this is just to maybe not understanding the ordinance, but as far as the tree replacement or the woodland replacement, since this is their private property, is that ordinance expanded? I would assume it's expanded across the city, but since it's their land, they're taking down their trees, the reimbursement to the city for that hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars is, can you just explain that to me a little bit?
The city has a policy or ordinance that stipulates that for removal of trees, of significant trees, of trees of a certain size and health, that if you're taking those down, you can either replace them on-site at one point five percent of the, of the size or caliber inch or provide the same value of that. And so at this point, the landscape plan does not equal the one point five percent that's being removed and as such, the contribution to the city for off-site plantings is required.
Is that implemented more when you're talking about a pretty concentrated wooded area like this?
Yes.
Maybe I can save the rest of my questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Workman. At this point, we'll have the...
Mr. Chair, excuse me. Commissioner Levy. Mr. Workman's question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You mentioned that there are some oak wilt in the area.
Actually, sir, what I said as part of the condition is that the forester should be going out, the applicant shall work with the forester to identify any disease that's out there so that precautions are taken so that it would not spread. Yes.
Any that are found, are they charged against the applicant?
Would they be credited for those?
Well, whichever way you want to...
I believe, I believe the way the replacement works is that it's, it's significant healthy trees. Nothing prevents you from taking down. In fact, I think it's mandatory that you take down diseased trees.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other questions? Commissioner Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just clarification on one issue, the, the special purpose fence height. Can you explain a little bit about staff rationale on that, about limiting it to eight? Is that just a conformity issue or...?
Within the residential area, eight feet is our maximum height and this is still residential. We think that the areas of concern, to go to nine, go to, to go to ten feet will actually make that fence more obvious because it'll be out of scale with everything else within, both in the residential neighborhood and in the, this, the church. Additionally, the locations of that, I'm going to find which one. Yeah. Locations of these areas, we believe that with, based on the topography and elevation that the eight feet is satisfactory. And in this area in particular, that the screening, if we're telling, talking about eight feet, that's actually along a, a street right away. We don't feel that a taller fence is appropriate there.
Thank you.
Commissioner, other, other questions?
Chair, I have one more follow-up question.
Commissioner Workman.
I didn't throw my notes. As far as snow plowing and the snow storage goes, is that going to affect the parking on-site or will they be removing that from the site?
I believe they've, as part of their overall plan, they have snow storage areas identified specifically and again, I think what I will do is I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benke.
Mr. Brixis, I, I know it was in the background. I'm having really trouble finding it here. Do you happen, did you happen to notice when the west parcel was purchased by Brian?
Yes, I think it's in either the, I think it's in the history.
Yeah, I thought so too, but I wasn't finding it.
Commissioner Benke, can we move forward and have, he'll maybe look at his...
Sure.
Look at his background and we can come back to that.
Sure. The other question I think was probably to the city engineer. Brian, it appears that, that all the traffic studies were done only assuming the entrances as currently proposed. There were no looking at any alternates within their traffic study, correct?
Commissioner Benke, that is correct. They did some modifications to what's out there right now with their traffic management plan, but there is no new access points.
Okay.
Commissioner Benke, I think I have your response. It sounds, it looks like in the history that the first site, parcel A, which is this one right here, was owned in, in nineteen sixty-three. Parcel B was purchased in nineteen sixty-five, second largest parcel. And with this parcel was, parcel C was purchased later on.
Okay, I had it backward. Okay. All right. And then one last thing. Now, the, the loading dock, they're equating it to be a single car garage door, but I, I didn't see anything on plans that talked about its height or width. And I know that you did, you did talk about it being a, a dock style door.
Again, I will let the applicant speak to that.
Commissioners, any other questions of staff? With that, I would ask the applicant to come up and we'll move forward with her piece. the applicant to come up and, um, we'll move forward with their piece.
Good evening.
Oh, oh.
Is that the door?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Rose, I know it's in here, but make sure you give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Eric Rose, one seven one two three Hollyhock Court in Lakeville. Uh, I am the building chair for Breeon. I also serve on the elder board there, uh, just for a little background on that. Um, and as we have questions afterwards, I'd be happy to field those. We also have our project architect here who's not giving a presentation, but more of an expert to be on certain questions that may be asked. So we'll call him up if applicable. Um, so in an effort not to repeat, uh, well, first of all, commissioners, thank you for having us here tonight and for hearing our project. I'd like to thank staff as well for, uh, the reviews and the process, um, and for the neighbors and, uh, Breeon, as we've had many meetings, uh, able to go back and forth and have a better understanding of how our two properties, uh, work together and what we need to do better, um, not only today, but also in the future. Um, so I, I thought I'd start, uh, a little more with the history than getting into the weeds of the plans too much, but I'll respond to some of the other questions that came up before since Al, uh, gave a good summary of, of the plans. Uh, but as Al mentioned, the, the Breeon was first built in nineteen sixty-three, uh, and it was just a small chapel house at that time. Um, and actually between nineteen sixty-three and nineteen eighty-three, uh, there were six additions done to the building. Um, this, the first CUP was actually in nineteen eighty-two. So up until that point, I'm not sure if there wasn't any zoning, um, or, or what the situation was. But, uh, so the initial CUP was actually in nineteen eighty-two. Um, nineteen eighty-six is when Breeon, uh, first came with a phased development plan, um, as we thought out the future of how our lot, uh, might develop. Uh, as part of that CUP, there was an addition, I think it was a six thousand six hundred square foot addition that was built as part of phase one. Uh, and we had a proposed phase two, which I'll show you on a following slide, uh, that showed how we believed our campus would be built out at that time. And actually why we're here today is to show the conclusion of that, uh, phase plan. Um, in nineteen eighty-seven, Interlock and Woods was approved by the city, uh, and that single family development, um, was, uh, constructed shortly after. Uh, our next project at Breeon was in two thousand. Uh, we had a CUP amendment, uh, as was mentioned by Al. It was a forty-four thousand foot, uh, expansion. Uh, and this included, uh, part of the phase two that was discussed in nineteen eighty-six, uh, but it did not include the sanctuary space that was identified. Um, today, as I mentioned before, uh, we are here to show the refined amendment, uh, for our final addition on our campus, um, for our CUP. I'll, I'll go to the next slide to show you what was shown in nineteen eighty-six, and then we'll follow that up with a little more discussion on where we are today. Um, so what you're seeing in front of you now is the nineteen eighty-six, uh, phased development plan. Uh, phase one is in the darker hatch, um, and the parking is all on the right side of those dash lines. Uh, phase two was actually identified on here as a twelve hundred seat, uh, future sanctuary addition. Uh, what we're proposing today is actually one thousand forty-six because we're planning on using some of the existing space as well as the new sanctuary to seat our future congregants. Um, at this time, they had projected about eight hundred plus stalls would be necessary. Um, the one, the one thing you'll notice on this plan is the sanctuary is going in almost the exact spot that is shown on here. Uh, but one new addition to the property is really just Plymouth Road, uh, that was constructed. Uh, and that was constructed after the, uh, Interlock and Woods was developed, um, at the city's, uh, request to put that road through, improve access to that development. Um, so that was not something that Breeon was in favor of, but they were applying, you know, they're willing to work with the city. And in the end, uh, they allowed that road to go through. So, uh, while we share the sentiment that we would much prefer one parking lot not split by a public road, um, we also feel that our hands are tied based upon what was best for the public, uh, at that time. Um, move on to the next slide. I just want to do a quick summary on maybe some of the city ordinances versus how we approach the plans that you're in front, in front of you today. Um, building setback, uh, the minimum requirement is fifty feet. The minimum we're proposing to you guys today is ninety-four feet. Uh, parking setbacks, uh, east of Plymouth, so on the same side as our building, uh, city requirements would have a minimum of five feet. Uh, we're proposing a minimum of thirty feet. I know twenty-three foot was, uh, mentioned previous. Um, I'm not sure where that number came from. It might've been drawn to a setback line. Um, but we're still, we're still maintaining the thirty foot that we discussed with the neighbors, uh, and have, and have been showing. Uh, parking setback west of Plymouth would have the same setback requirements of five feet. Our proposed parking would, would keep that setback sixty-five feet off, uh, the western line. And I believe we're a hundred and eighty feet off the southern property lines and even a hundred and twenty feet off once the future proof of parking, uh, would be constructed. Couple other minimums that we are looking to exceed, uh, in the area of the, uh, parking lot expansion on the east side of Plymouth is our planting sizes. Uh, we know that, uh, everyone's in favor of more trees and more plantings anyways, but these trees serve two purposes. These trees also serve a very big purpose of screening for the neighbors. Um, so while a six-foot spruce tree is going to grow really well and be healthy in the end, we wanted to give a little more of a day one screening to the neighbors along those property lines. Um, and the honey locust and the oak trees planted in that area are going to be a four-inch caliber rather than the two and a half inch that would meet the city minimum. You guys mentioned the neighborhood meetings before. Um, so since our last planning commission meeting, we've had two meetings, uh, with the neighbors. The first one had over thirty people at it, um, and we were able to take more notes, um, and identify more issues, uh, that came up. And then we had a follow-up meeting, uh, that had, uh, with several neighbors, I believe there were six at that meeting, where we, we were able to show or at least discuss what we were gonna do for the change plans, um, so that coming into tonight's meeting, we were on the same page. Um, the intent was to have a harmonious meeting and, and be on the same page. Um, while there's still is opposition to the project, we're aware of that. Uh, we feel that we have done everything, um, with our current plans, uh, that we could accommodate these needs. So I'll run through a couple of those for you guys. Uh, one of those was remove the southernmost drive, uh, proposed driveway apron. Uh, that would've been the one closest to the residence. Uh, we were looking to potentially modify the curbs or see how that could work, but we decided to eliminate that, um, and, and just deal with it from a parking management plan. Uh, the second was the curb alignments on our existing, uh, driveways along Plymouth Avenue. Uh, we've adjusted the curb alignment, so if you're driving north on Plymouth, it's basically a ninety-degree curb, so it'd be very difficult to take a right turn into our property. Um, and even one of those accesses, we actually have an inverse radius, so it'd be impossible to take a right turn out, and it'd actually be very difficult to take a left turn out. So it's almost like a merge, uh, onto Plymouth, pushing you towards either the front of your road on one forty-fifth or Connie Road forty-two. We're also increasing signage to direct people, um, not to come up through the neighborhood. Um, there's gonna be an additional sign down at South Cross saying, uh, no, no through traffic for church. Um, we're also gonna have no right turn ins, uh, from the neighborhood on the southern side of Plymouth, and we'll have no left turns out of our, of our eastern parking lot coming out of our property. Uh, also additional signage will be there for the crosswalks that have been identified, um, before. Another, uh, item that we have changed on the plans is we have three existing stalls, uh, directly south of the addition that we actually are planning to remove, uh, and just improve planting and vegetation on those. We thought that those are some sightlines for, uh, residents that actually live on the, even the opposite side of Innsbrook that would be looking up at the addition. So, uh, we removed those and we're adding, uh, three spruce trees, uh, or maybe six spruce trees, I can look at the plan, uh, in those locations to improve screening. Uh, we included an additional fifteen white spruce trees along the southern property line. Uh, Al, uh, mentioned that as well, and we've already, uh, established the fact that we're increasing the sizing for screening. Um, what's in front of you here is a site plan, um, that shows some of the modifications. Al ran through this, um, but if you look closely at those entrances off Plymouth Avenue, you'll notice that the northern of the two, going to the east, how it actually curves out, pushing those traffic, that traffic to the north. And then the southern two, uh, it would be very difficult to take a right turn in to the eastern lot and be very difficult to take a right turn out. Uh, we felt that those were two, two ways we could deter traffic from wanting to come up, uh, through the neighborhood. Um, and we also, uh, eliminated the southern axis. This next slide, uh, shows the setbacks. We've already covered this as well. Um, I'll just make note of the fences. Our intent was to install a six-foot fence. We would be willing to do eight as well if that's what was recommended. Uh, our details in our plan showed what you would have to do structurally if the fence was bigger than six or eight foot, and that's why ten foot has been referenced, uh, this evening. Um, you can also see on that plan, if you look closely, we, we identified the thirty-foot minimum on the setback for the parking. Uh, so where that eastern parking lot gets its closest points to the property lines, you can see one of them is thirty foot, four inches, and the other one is thirty foot even. So we've identified our minimum, uh, setbacks from those parking stalls. Um, I just wanted to bring up the drainage one more time, not, not on a technical level, but one item that came up in the neighborhood meeting, uh, was that our drainage from kind of the center of our campus flows to the south and to the southeast. Uh, and the resident that lives that direction, um, has had some water issues flowing off our parking lot and being saturated. So if you look on your, on your, right now, if the, the two twenty-five area, so the area of the addition, uh, most of that area right now today, the natural drainage actually flows to the south and to the southeast. Uh, with this proposed project, all the roof drains that are collected in that project are actually all controlled and, and they're all piped to the detention system that, uh, Brian referenced before. Uh, so we feel like there is an existing issue out here that is resolved, uh, as a result of this project as well. Uh, I don't need to go further into landscaping. I feel like we've covered our basis between Al's presentation and mine. Um, the one last item I did want to touch on, uh, from a plan standpoint is the parking proposal. Uh, we've mentioned, or we've heard that, uh, the total maximum required spaces is a thousand fifty-four. Um, and I just wanted to give perspective on why we're proposing eight hundred and eighty-six here today. Um, our goal with the parking is to provide adequate parking for what we feel we need as a church, uh, while limiting the impact of the neighboring properties as well as the environment. We don't foresee a need for a thousand fifty-four stalls, nor do we want to construct a sea of asphalt unless it was going to be used by our congregants. Um, our proposal even goes down to eight hundred and forty-two stalls to be proposed on day one of the opening of our facility. We actually believe that that will be enough in the end. Um, but we're showing the additional forty-four, uh, just to show on what we could construct if needed. Um, our, now, if we applied our uses to, um, to your ordinance, uh, we believe we'd come up with eight hundred thirteen stalls being required. Um, part of the goal of our project, uh, or the result of our project that we are excited about, um, is building this addition allows us to have our gym back. Um, and our gym really serves the purpose of our youth and Wednesday night and programming, uh, that allows them to use that room. Um, as the current ordinance sits, having that gym back as a gym would apply two hundred and thirteen parking stalls to our property. Um, that doesn't seem reasonable, um, to us from a, a youth standpoint. Um, so we just wanted to bring that to the attention, uh, of the commission and say that, um, that's why we're proposing what we are. We're not pushing back on a, on a fire commercial restriction. Uh, we're more than happy to work with him as well. Um, I just wanted to give some context to that. Um, the other, the other use that isn't really applicable to Sunday mornings for us is our offices. People that use the offices during the week are out with the congregation, they're teaching classes, they're, they're listening to the services just like the rest of the congregation. So we don't apply those stalls to our Sunday morning use either. Requiring additional parking, uh, if we go down that road, um, which, which we can, will result in, uh, additional tree removal, uh, and, and could potentially reduce some of the setbacks I've referenced here today. Those still fit within the city ordinance, um, but, but those are some of the results that we're trying to avoid. Um, and, there's one more thing on parking. Uh, one, one item that came up is a question I can, I can, uh, discuss now is, one of the questions, how much trees are we gonna remove, uh, with, with the parking? Our plan, uh, in response to the city comments would be, we could show how the lot will be graded in its final state, but our, our, uh, our request or our ask to the city would be that we don't touch any wooded area until it's needed to be touched. We can show the feasibility of it, uh, in a, in a plan view, uh, but it would be our preference to leave, leave it in its natural state. Uh, but we were more than, we're willing to do grading if that's what's determined, uh, by the city. Um, and the last, really this isn't project related, I just wanted to make a note of, uh, to us as Breeon, this is, uh, this is more than a building. This is about changing lives in our community. And, um, we know that there's a lot of emphasis on, like, how this impacts other people. Uh, and we do want to work with our neighbors, and we don't want to be, uh, hindrance to them. Uh, but to us, it's not about a forty-two, forty-one foot, four-inch building. It's not about an additional parking lot. It's really what we've seen come through our doors, especially in the past few years, and people, uh, coming through with needs and, uh, us being able to give more. Um, for us to feel like we're done growing here is, is almost like feeling like we're saying that we've met the needs of the community around us, and we're continuing to see that need come in. Um, so to us, the building and the parking lot are worth the investment. They're not the point for us. Um, and so we do want to be a good neighbor, uh, and, and that's my closing point. Uh, we feel like we've modified our plans in a good faith effort to do that. I hope that, um, hope, I hope that's well received, even if we are on different sides of the table here today. Um, and we will continue to be a good neighbor, um, to the best we can. Um, so I'm gonna close there, and I can either open it up to our traffic engineer, or I can respond to questions now.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Why don't you stay there for just a second? Um, commissioners, um, while the applicant's, uh, at the podium, um, I think we should ask questions. Commissioner Workman, you had a question?
I have a few. Um, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Rose. Um, with regards to the snow removal, is there a plan for that, uh, with this expansion of parking? Or I guess, how do you guys handle that now and how would you?
Yeah, yep. So our per, our current process is we haul it off, uh, immediately. Now, depending on the snow type and the time of day, uh, sometimes they'll be temporarily, temporarily stockpiled. Uh, so what the plans do is they identify areas where they would be temporarily stockpiled, but we have a process where we haul that snow off to open up those parking stalls.
All right. Um, there was some mention at our last meeting about noise from the expansion. Um, has that been addressed in the plans as far as soundproofing? Um, you know, for any potential concerts or events that are held at the, uh, at the expansion?
Yeah, so noise coming out of the building, yeah, you will not hear any noise coming out of the building. We won't even hear them in our, uh, core, our commons area that we call between our two services. So, uh, the noise from any music or anything like that will be confined to the interior space.
Okay. And then, um, I just, is there, are, will there be plans with that, I mean, that many seedings to have more type of events, ancillary events outside of, uh, service?
No.
Kind of like Hosanna has a big Christmas concert every year?
Yeah, yeah. So to give context, uh, um, some of the larger churches in the area to how Breeon would approach this is we, we're proposing a thousand forty-six seats. Hosanna seats about twenty-five hundred. Um, our current sanctuary space is gonna be reduced, but we're pretty close to seven hundred seats. Um, we're not exceeding, our operation isn't changing in any way that way. We don't feel like this is a large, um, concert hall by any means. We have no intent of, of changing the way we operate today. Yeah.
And then as far as the loading dock goes, I know Commissioner Benke wanted to ask some more questions on that, but as far as the hours of operation, I thought I had, uh, remember somebody saying that that would only be used once or twice a week.
Yeah, yeah.
During regular business hours?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
Confirmed.
And then this is kind of a moot point at this point, um, but did, has it, was there ever any consideration for a parking deck or a, a ramp of any kind to alleviate the parking issue?
Yeah. Um, so parking ramp would have two negative effects in our perspective. It has been discussed and brought up by our congregation as well. Uh, it's very cost prohibitive. Um, so it's at a minimum ten times the cost of a parking lot. Um, so for us to use our resources that we would prefer to give away, um, it would be basically, uh, millions of dollars to make up that lot across the street. So I can't say it's not feasible, um, but it, it is cost prohibitive for us.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Benke?
Uh, Mr. Rose, um, I'd inquired of staff, and I know, I think you might've been copied on this too, about the background for the area. Um, I'm familiar with Interlock and Woods. Um, I was involved, you know, tannically in some of the homes that were in there. Um, I guess what it's telling me is that in nineteen eighty-seven, when Interlock and Woods was approved, as you pointed out, the, that was discussed with Breeon.
Hmm.
And at that point, Breeon agreed to the location of the road, whether they didn't like it or not, I guess is immaterial, that they still agreed to it.
Yeah.
I did notice that the eighty-six CUP, um, a couple of things on that. Number one, obviously it didn't have Plymouth Road in it.
Mm-hmm.
But Plymouth Road certainly impacts what was proposed at that point, in that it essentially eliminated a large chunk of future parking that you guys were planning at that point.
Yeah, uh, so if I would respond to that, um, yeah, and discussing with staff, I think we were trying to be a good public, we, we would've never been told when Plymouth Road went through that that would prohibit what you proposed in the year prior. I, so I think the way the order went would've been nineteen eighty-six, we proposed a phased development plan. Um, nineteen eighty-seven, the development was approved, and I believe the first talk of Plymouth Avenue was actually nineteen eighty-nine when easements were acquired. Um, so the order there would've been, um, we were trying to be good neighbor, and I think back to the property discussion and when did we acquire the southernmost property. Uh, I know in nineteen eighty-six is when we were close to an agreement with that. I can't confirm if that happened at the end of eighty-six or early eighty-seven.
I was actually more interested in, in the west parcel.
Okay.
But apparently that was part of the original.
Okay, yeah. So, so, oh yeah, so part of our hardship, I guess, would be that, um, So, so, oh yeah, so part of our hardship, I guess, would be that we don't feel like we had a choi, I'm not crying over spilled milk, but we don't feel like we had a choice with Plymouth Avenue going through, but we also would have never been told that you can no longer use your, your western lot because we're putting a road through your property.
Agreed. I guess the other thing I'm noticing from the, the CUP is, while, from the nineteen eighty-six is that while the future sanctuary addition is shown here, it's certainly not in the same, it's in the same location, but it's certainly not the same size.
I would, it might be a scale issue. I think the text on there says twelve hundred seats.
Right.
So.
The other thing I'm noticing is that the parking lot in the CUP had a single access to essentially what would now be Plymouth Road. Has the congregation discussed that amongst themselves to reducing the number of accesses and only having an access to the, to the north?
Yeah, so when we, when we looked at this from a traffic management plan standpoint, it'd be, the parking lot itself would become much more discombobulated and you'd have a lot more parking issues on site if you reduced the accesses more.
I know that, that the high school had a considerable amount of problems with traffic and I'm guessing that high schoolers are not quite the same kind of drivers that church people are. But the school did reduce the number of accesses to control traffic better. And I guess I, that, that's been my curious, curiosity here is, is why, especially the way that some of them are aligned, they seem to create more problems with traffic, in my mind, than they're solving. And I think traffic is probably the number one issue here. And if, if your traffic was directed to Plymouth Road to the north, clearly you may not have some of the problems that you're having.
So yeah, so we, I, I'll, I'll pass, I'll let that go for our traffic engineer that comes up. He's more of an expert than me on this.
Sure.
But we have reviewed our traffic management plan with them as well.
Good, thank you.
Commissioners, other questions for the applicant or I could refer to the traffic engineer? Commissioners, sing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Rose, I don't have a question for you, I just have a comment. At the last meeting, one of my major concerns about this entire application was the traffic problem. And we heard that loud and clear from the neighborhood. I am very pleased that you have done some work on trying to redirect traffic away from the residential area. And I commend you for doing that. It does not take away my total concern about the traffic situation, but I will deserve more comments for later. But I want to commend you for, and you and all the rest of people from Breehan for working on that. My concern is not as, at a high level at this point, so, but I'll comment more later on. But thank you for doing that.
Can I make one comment on that as well?
Yes, sir.
In addition to the plan changes that we have done in that, we have, the original plan is when the addition came in, we were going to start a proper, parking management team. But after hearing the January fourth, so then, before we came here, the initial meeting where we had a good attendance with neighbors was, we started taking a much more education-based process with our congregation. And what we saw was a, was even a drastic reduction, pre-planned changes in our congregants using that neighborhood road before. So I believe the last four weeks, we've been under ten cars. So we've been counting every Sunday. We have a guy down at the accesses asking people if they're coming from this neighborhood or not and asking them to go a different way next time. And so we've actually been, I believe last week was five cars, and the week before that was five, and the week before that was nine. So we have been trying to be as proactive as possible.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, other questions? Well, I, I think we have, I think a couple of questions for the traffic engineer.
Very good.
If you want to stick around, we may have a couple more questions.
I'll come back up.
Sir, please give us your name, and I know you've got some information in the back room, but please give us your name and, and address for the record.
Sure, my name's Matt Pacina with SRF Consulting, One Carlson Parkway, Plymouth, Minnesota. Thanks. Mr. Chair, commissioners, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. At the onset of this study, which began back in August, we, we worked, worked with the city and county officials to kind of set the standards as far as what we're going to look at and evaluate as part of this. And then we kind of followed through our industry standards from a traffic study perspective in evaluating this site. I'm not going to touch base too much on the, the data collection aspect and different things. I mean, certainly can answer any questions that you have regarding that, but I really want to just focus on, so what are the key changes here that impact traffic from how things are there today? So from, from a traffic perspective, the attendance numbers changing. Right now, as Brian alluded to earlier, I kind of have the six hundred, about six hundred and eighty-five people at, or attendees at the, at the max service today. And for our analysis, we looked at two, two future conditions where we had about nine hundred people per service and then up to eleven hundred people per service. The other things that we looked at, right now, there's a, it's a three-service format on Sundays. We looked at changing that down to a two-service format, which, which is planned. One thing that we didn't necessarily account for is that going to a two-service format, that there's some efficiencies that are gained from the church's perspective as far as volunteers and staffing. But we didn't, we wanted to make sure we provided a conservative assessment of this. And so we didn't basically assume any change in, in essentially the number of vehicles per attendee type of rate. So there would be some, some savings in that regard from, from a traffic volume perspective. Another thing that we touched base on was just the timeframe between services. One of the base assumptions was that there'd be about twenty minutes between the exiting period, or when the first service gets out and the second service starts. And as you know, with uses that, you know, have a specific start or end time, particularly in a church in this instance, the majority of those motorists that are coming to that service are, you know, they arrive in that, you know, fifteen minute window right before or kind of leave during that fifteen minute window right after. And so you can kind of see how, right now, a twenty-minute headway between the end and the start, really, you're, you're mashing up the, the entering from, or the exiting from the first service with the entering from the second service. So those two peaks are really overlapping. And so I'll talk a little bit about a recommendation to, to modify that here in a little bit. The other thing we, we looked at was the parking and access location changes. We essentially evaluated what was shown on the plans there today. We did have discussions with the county as far as looking at alternative access directly to County Road Forty-two. The county said that was a non-starter as far as, doesn't meet their access guidelines. And so they were unwilling to work with, with the applicant as far as providing additional access on the County Road Forty-two. To get to your other point or question about how, looking at different access configurations on County Forty-two, briefly, from a traffic operations perspective, I mean, there is a fair amount of traffic that is coming to and going from the facility. And if you had only one access point, it would really create some, some challenges. And there already are some challenges at that upper access today. And so going, reducing it down to access points further than what they've kind of already have would, would potentially be detrimental to the operations. So as we go through, you know, the traffic operations study and looking at intersection capacity and different things, we did note, based on these changes, some, some, some issues, particularly from an intersection capacity and queuing perspective. Most of those were surrounded around Plymouth Avenue and at County Road Forty-two, as well as kind of that upper church access. So a lot, a lot of where the majority of the traffic is coming from and going to today. And so there's a number of factors that are, that are causing that. I mean, we talked a little bit about going from three down to two services, but it's really kind of that headway time between, between when the, the two services end and begin. Another thing we looked at is, is internal circulation. So how efficiently do cars get into and out of the site? Anytime you look at, I call it event management, think of a sports event or anything like that, you want to get vehicles into and out of parking spaces as efficient, as efficiently as possible. And so providing event staff or, or volunteers to get those motorists into and out of those spaces helps operations both internally and externally. Another thing that we wanted to touch base on was the neighborhood impacts. We did hear that from the neighborhood and the residents. So right now, from the data that we collected when we were doing our data collection, we saw about thirty to forty peak hour vehicles that were coming from the neighborhood that were destined into the church. So that was the turning moments that we had collected. That was kind of consistent between whether it was a Wednesday evening or a Saturday, or a, excuse me, a Sunday service timeframe. That accounted for, looking at all the volume that, and the traffic that was coming into and out of the church, that was about five percent or less of the total traffic at that time. And as Eric alluded to, some of the, with some of the strategies that have been implemented, you know, that number's actually come down since, since we started as well. So then, knowing that there's some queuing issues at County Road Forty-two and the upper church access, really, we, we identified kind of a laundry list of, of improvements and recommendations that are incorporated or in the planning process to be incorporated. So some of the things we looked at is modifying and restricting access to improve circulation. And I'll show you a graphic here, and I think we saw it a little bit earlier, as far as how you, one example way that how you can manage your traffic and how you're getting vehicles into and out of the site to really reduce conflicts and, and make it more efficient for those vehicles to get into and out. So, so there's some access restrictions from, from that regard. Providing traffic control officers, that happens today and that's something that we would expect to continue to help improve operations. Dedicating and managing their parking areas. We talked a lot about the, the new lot to the west of Plymouth Avenue. We would recommend that would be something that would be designated for volunteers and employees. Those are type of users that will have low turnover. And essentially, they're coming before the services and leaving after the, after the services, so that reduces the amount of conflicts for vehicles entering and exiting, as well as with the crosswalk that's adjacent there. It really does reduce the amount of conflict. So that was another component. Adjusting the service times to increase the start, the, the time difference between when one service ends and the next service starts. We recommended moving that at least fifteen minutes further, so to get it to that thirty-five minute mark roughly. Once again, I'll show you a graphic here in a little bit that kind of shows what that means for kind of the peak hour traffic volumes and how you, if you shift that out a little bit. One thing I, you know, in discussions with, with the church, extending it more than that, you start to lose some of the efficiencies of the volunteers. So it's, it's a fine line and, you know, and little tweaks, five minutes here can, can make a big difference. As I mentioned, we've been coordinating with county staff throughout this to adjust signal timing. They have the, the planned improvements along there that they can provide some more signal timing flexibility, improve operations and how that's managed. Eric alluded to, you know, limiting the neighborhood cut through, through signing and education. The signing that is in place is enforceable. So, you know, that's something that police could, could ticket a citation for or initiate a citation. It's, so it's something that could be done. Now, it's not necessarily, you know, probably the highest priority from the, from police's perspective, but it's something that, that could be enforced. Education, announcements, different things of that nature to really say, be a good neighbor, don't travel through the neighborhood. Those are all things that, that are part of the solution to reducing neighborhood impacts. Encouraging more, more Lakeville campus attendance and other satellite uses. Developing a travel demand management plan, you know, these are essentially strategies, kind of how you manage your traffic. You know, the signing, the educate, the education aspect of things is, is one strategy, you know, and then you get into your volunteers and how you manage that traffic during, during your, your service times. And then, you know, the church is committed to the, kind of the after study and the plan refinements. So anytime you have a, a, a change in traffic patterns, you want to continue to monitor it and make tweaks and refinements as necessary. So I think that, that's taking a, a big step. We did want to note that, you know, in working with the county, if there are future issues that do develop, there are other options that the county, we've had some discussions with as far as other infrastructure improvements that were identified as part of the traffic study. Some striping rechanges at Plymouth and County Road Forty-two to kind of get a dual left-turn lane in there, as well as some other options as far as potentially northbound right from Plymouth Avenue to Plymouth Avenue or Hundred and Forty-Fifth there. So we identified a couple other improvements that could be incorporated if, if there's other issues that do develop. So then, here's just the, the real basic, you know, example, you know, kind of that Sunday service traffic control plan we talked about. Essentially, what we would be looking at here is, these orange dots are cones. And so one of the concerns, particularly from the county's perspective, as vehicles coming from County Road Forty-two today, a majority of them enter at the, the upper church access or the north church access. That has the potential to queue back to County Road Forty-two, and that's a major concern from the county's perspective. And so a way to help alleviate that is to direct those motorists coming from County Road Forty-two down to Plymouth Avenue and have them enter off of Plymouth Avenue. What this does is a couple of things. It increases that store, vehicle storage distance, as well as it helps create kind of a circular traffic flow pattern, which is a very efficient, efficient pattern for getting vehicles into and out. So you're really minimizing your amount of impacts from vehicles that are coming for the, for the second service and exiting from the first service. So you're trying to minimize those impacts as much as you can in conflicts. So I've identified a few staff in here. These green dots are essentially a volunteer location. And so the purpose of those are to really help those, you know, if you think of a sporting event and if you're going tailgating or something along those lines and you get directed to a specific parking spot or at least a general area where there's available parking, that would be the purpose of these, of those volunteers, is to get those vehicles into the designated parking areas as efficiently as possible. So here's one more graphic that I want to show. This is just essentially a traffic volume pattern during the Sunday peak period. So the red line on this graphic here is essentially Sunday morning at seven thirty, and this is the current condition from the traffic volumes that we collected going till about one o'clock in the afternoon. And you can see the peak times right now as they spike during, kind of before and after and/or between the, the different service times. The orange line is essentially that time between the, the first service and the second service that's proposed. So you can see it's a pretty noticeable spike. And that's where we were seeing those traffic concerns and issues queuing on County Road Forty-two. So the blue lines on here is essentially what happens when you, all you do, all you do differently is just add fifteen minutes to that, that difference between the end time and the start time. And you can see what that does to bringing down those peak hour volumes, very similarly to the existing peaks that are out there today. So the, the key takeaway from this is that, you know, through these management strategies, you can really lessen your impacts. And if you were to spread it out another five minutes, that, that would change even more and probably come down a little bit more. But, you know, you're, from, from the service, this change is roughly a ten percent difference from what it is from the peak today. So that'll provide you a little bit of perspective. I won't, I won't touch base on this too much, but we did look at that pedestrian crossing and, and the sight distance, it does meet the minimum standards for, for pedestrian, for stopping sight distance, for a vehicle to identify a pedestrian and, and stop safely. And so, so from my perspective, the, the conclusion is that, you know, with the recommended improvements, the access modifications, the volunteers, the travel demand strategies, you kind of combine all these into, into one aspect and, and the, the traffic operations will continue to be within the acceptable standards for the area. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Dean, here.
I have one quick question.
Commissioner Workman.
Is there, maybe this is a question for Mr. Rose, but was there any coordination with the church across the street as far as service times and traffic from their letting out of their services?
So from our traffic data that we collected, obviously there is, the Good Shepherd Church was in, that, that volume set was included in ours. And so I know the church is willing to adjust their And so, I know the church is willing to adjust their service times to avoid that overlap period and to kind of minimize any of those peak conditions.
And I suppose in some of that consideration with the traffic through Innsbruck, there, was it, how would you differentiate who, I suppose, whoever was turning into which parking lot would be how you got your call?
Exactly.
Answered my own question. Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any other questions of the applicant before we open the public hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open a public hearing. I would like to just go through a couple of things. For some of you, this is not new. Some of you, it is new. In the interest of time, we do have, at our last meeting, we did spend about an hour and a half taking comments from both sides representing the church and the neighborhood. We do have a statute this evening that we have to convene by ten o'clock, so we don't have exactly an hour and a half or close to it tonight. So, what I would like to say is, I'd like to make sure everyone knows that we have everyone's background. From an informational standpoint, we have all of the statements in our background. This is probably a record for me from a standpoint of the amount of information we got. We have the summary from everyone that spoke at the first meeting, all eighteen people. We do have the comments and the summary from the neighborhood meetings. We do have, in our background, all the information in the way of what Breen does in the way of a community support. And we also have a total of twenty-three letters in our background that came from varying people that were sent to city staff or one of the city council members, and we've all read through that. And then, we have, since this information was published on Thursday, we have an additional nine letters and information coming to us. So, I just want to please be cautious of our time. We do have all of that information in our background. I would also ask that we keep a presentation to around three minutes. We have several people that want to speak, and then we have a fair amount of conditions to work through to be able to vote on this. So, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Before we start, Commissioner Singh. I think Chairman Rose and the traffic engineer also covered quite a bit, have given us a lot of information. Some of them, they have answered questions before I asked them. So, I think those in attendance need to take that into consideration and as much as possible, try not to repeat what others have said, so, respect for the time that we have.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh. Commissioners, before we begin, any other comments? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this point, I would like to open the public hearing and invite, I do have a list of about twenty-six people that wanted to speak. We can certainly go through this list. In the past, I've had a tremendous amount of luck with people just kind of raising their hand, and as you can tell, I try not to ignore Commissioners when they raise their hand. So, I'd rather try that first, and if that doesn't work, then we'll go back to the stated list. So, I would like to open the public hearing now, and you're going to hear this a lot when you come to the podium. Please give your name and address for the motion.
I'm Ken Hogland. I live at two zero zero four East One Twenty-Fifth Street in Burnsville. I've lived in Burnsville for forty-nine years, and I've spent almost all that time at Breen. And as a professional engineer, I've had the opportunity to be on most of the building committees that Breen has had. And I actually had the opportunity to chair the Two Thousand Building Committee. You've heard a lot tonight about the Two Thousand program, and we want to thank you for approving that program. We made a lot of promises back then, and I'm happy to report that we've kept all those promises and more. And we thank you for supporting Breen over the last forty to fifty years. Since I presented to you in the year two thousand, Breen has distributed over a million dollars in aid to hurting community members, perhaps some in your families. We brought food, clothing, and supplies to teenagers in Lincoln Place. We provided daycare to hundreds of Burnsville children, perhaps some of yours. We've provided tutoring, school supplies, and summer programs to many kids in Chancellor Manor. And two times per year, we've provided free clothing and household supplies to about three hundred and fifty Burnsville families. Provided foster care and safe families for Burnsville families in crisis. Partnered with three sixty communities armful of love, supplying gifts for four hundred and seventy families. Donated food, time, and money to local food shelves, four thousand pounds last year alone. Provided children's programs and camps for hundreds of kids, perhaps some of yours. Partnered with Feed My Starving Children to feed the hungry worldwide. This is just a sampling of the community-based things that Breen does to be a good neighbor. Breen is composed of many hundreds of taxpaying residents that want to serve our community while we are serving God. Please allow us to continue on the successful path to benefit even more residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. That's working very well. Raise your hand. Thank you.
I'm John Shattuck. I live at one five zero two eight Windmere Lane, Burnsville, Minnesota, five five three oh six. My husband and I moved to Burnsville within this past year. Two neighbors invited us to Breen. At that time, our life was filled with several very demanding and stressful events, but we found hope and encouragement at Breen, so we kept going. Over the past several months, we found that Breen presents the life-changing message of salvation through faith in Jesus Christ. It's a message of forgiveness, redemption, strength for the day, service to others, hope for tomorrow, and for eternity. So, how does this benefit the community? When lives are transformed, neighborhoods and communities are transformed. Breen makes Burnsville feel like home, a place where you want to be. So, my husband, out of his enthusiasm for life here in Burnsville, volunteered to be on our Townhome Association Board, and in fact, he's at a board meeting tonight. He was motivated to do his part to make our community a great place to live, largely out of the encouragement that he's received from Breen. When I am out and about in Burnsville, shopping, and at the fitness club, I have found residents to be very friendly and very open. Some have shared with me that they are going through a particularly difficult time. I've had the opportunity to tell them about Breen Baptist Church. I know from firsthand experience that they too will find hope and encouragement at Breen. That's why Breen is growing. People are finding something there that they desperately need. Breen's expansion makes room for people who are looking to find hope and encouragement, and we need to have an open seat for them. Once they come and experience the life-transforming message of life in Jesus Christ, they become encouraged residents of Burnsville. Breen makes Burnsville look very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I'll say this a lot, but please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. If you missed something, let me know.
My name is Kyle Linton. I'm at two two Geneva Boulevard, Burnsville. I'm actually the first on the list there for you. You can check that one off for you. Thank you, kind of Chair Members of the Commission. Really appreciate the time and attention here. It's been phenomenal working with the church here. I'm representing kind of forty-nine, partially forty-nine of the neighbors that signed the petition. There's a lot more kind of content coming and whatever. Working with church has been great. This has not been contentious. It's actually been kind of a lot of give and take here, but that's kind of not the point. The point that kind of is more about kind of the concessions that have been made, like what we've addressed here, aren't quite kind of what we're looking for. What we're talking about here is the size of the church, the scope of the church, and kind of parking, traffic, safety, impacts to the direct neighbors, willing to concede the church's phenomenal things for the neighborhood, for the neighborhood of Burnsville. They are great people. They do a lot of good work. That's not the issue here. The issue here is we're talking to R-one residential property and the property rights and kind of what you do there. That's kind of the big issues here. So, we'll kind of go, just in the effort of time here, can we get the overhead?
Did we get that set up?
You should be able to.
There you go. Just move that over. Just, there you go. Thank you very much.
Perfect. All right. So, what we're talking about here is in addition of eleven hundred seats here, which is approximately the same size as the Ames Center, right? The Ames Center, you have about a thousand seats there, same thing, kind of what we're proposing here in this new center here. That's what you're looking at here in front of you, where you have, the Ames Center is about eight thousand square feet, eighty thousand square feet. Breen is sixty-seven, kind of finished square feet from a finishing standpoint. You can see from a landmass standpoint, they're pretty comparable. Now, what's different about these is, as we all know, the Ames Center was very contentious at the time, but Ames Center contained all of their services. It was built with the intent of the property in sight. It was built with the structure, the parking, the traffic in and out. There's no manual intervention. There's no police presence. There's no additional cones. There's no temporary solution for that. It works. It works for whatever you have there. It works for the eleven hundred seats here. Looking at Breen, you require a lot of manual intervention to make this system work. You've heard from the traffic. You've heard from the church itself that they have to put up signs. They need individual traffic onsite in the property. You need police presence to make this work at the current standpoint. You need cones set up to direct the flow of traffic around. It's not built for this kind of a site. That's kind of the structure here, what we're talking about here. In five years, three years, when kind of the attention's gone, what happens? That's kind of where we're at now. You don't have this site built to handle what's coming up here, when people lose interest, when the volunteers kind of start to whittle away and we all go please. So, that's number one. Number two is you also have a manual, three hundred people crossing Plymouth Road now. All right, so by having this extra site, you're having three people cross this Plymouth Road on purpose. The church has said it's kind of their intention, where you have all the staff and volunteers will park in the outlot. So, intentionally, that's not the overflow lot. That is the primary number-one parking, where, so you're going to put three hundred people now on a residential site overlooking kind of the neighborhood property that was intended for residents, crossing the major road, crossing where the traffic flow is going to be, getting back into the church. So, that was the second thing. We can go through kind of the variance, go through all of it. We respectfully disagree with the city's conclusion that this is a, both the practical difficulties here. This has been thirty years ago. We realized at the time, it happened, Breen was there, Breen had some objections, but they were complying with it. They've had thirty years to kind of talk about a plan for how do you address this for that time period. They've already started to go over plans here to go with multi-system, multi-site This is self-created because of the size of the expansion that they're putting here. They're putting the Ames Center on top of a site that's already as big as the Ames Center. That's the capacity they're putting in place here. That's kind of why this is a self-inflicted problem. This is not a structural problem. This is not a city issue. This is a traffic issue. It's a safety issue for the people coming up and down. So, that's what it is. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very. Name and address.
Lori Fannensteine. My home address is two one three zero three High Trail Circle, Lakeville, Minnesota, five five zero four four. I am speaking on behalf of Chianti Grill tonight at one four two nine six Plymouth Avenue South, right across the street from Breen. Thank you, Commissioners and staff. Good evening. My name is Lori Fannensteine. I am the General Manager of Chianti Grill here in Burnsville. I've actually worked for Chianti Grill for about a decade now. I stand before you today, sharing the support we have as a neighboring business and partner in the community to Breen Baptist Church. We have always considered us very fortunate to have the neighbors in which we have. As a locally-owned and operated business, I felt compelled to share the impact that Breen has on our business. When describing what a good neighbor means, I have to insert Breen's name right here. For those of you who do not know us and our concept, we are a fine dining Italian restaurant here in Burnsville. We have a patio that faces south on County Road Forty-two. Our guests can clearly see across the street to Breen. Our guests likely pass Breen on their way to dining with us as well. Breen has an immaculate, well-groomed, and maintained property. The grounds are clear of debris. The snow and ice is quickly managed upon a storm. The grass is always groomed, and the building, which has stood for over fifty years, has continuously been renovated, painted, and well-maintained time and time again. Our Sunday brunch runs from ten AM until two PM. It is without question that the volume of business we receive Sunday mornings can be attributed to the families attending church across the street. Sunday morning hosts the largest amount of staff that we employ on any given day of the week. We have correlated much of Breen's increase in attendance to our increase in sales during the time of services, events, and outreach programs that Breen holds. We have no noise concerns. With our patio, which sits on Forty-two, right across from this large church, we have always appreciated the respectfulness of the volume in which the church creates. Vacation Bible School. The outreach is not just the Burnsville community, but truly all surrounding suburbs. Parents for many years have dropped their children off at the annual week-long VBS and chosen to come dine with us across the street. Thanks to this outreach, we have, we now staff for one of the busiest weeks we have all summer long. For those of you who may not know me personally, I grew up in Interlocken Woods. I have watched Breen's impact on this community for over thirty years. Watching a living, growing, and giving church in my backyard was one of the best things I could have witnessed. I have read and looked over the plans and maps for Breen's expansion. I understand there are concerns, and yet I've watched Breen welcome with wide arms the opportunity to find common ground with the neighbors to discuss Breen's own property. It does not surprise me how generous, communicative, and caring Breen has been with these neighbors. From plans to plant taller trees than needed, leaving more feet and yardage between homes and future parking spaces, to graciously meeting with neighbors with questions and concerns. As a neighboring business to Breen, we appreciate having them as neighbors. We appreciate the help when needed and truly appreciate the business that we and all of the surrounding businesses receive due to the presence in our community. We at Chianti Grill and myself, Lori Fannensteine, support this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. See, that's working well.
My name's Robin Sanders. I live at two oh nine Interlocken Lane or Road, excuse me, that's Lane Road. They're kind of get confused. And first of all, I want to thank the Commission for addressing our concerns here. We actually moved from Minneapolis to Apple Valley thirty years ago, and we left Breen. And you talk about neighborhood traffic. We drove through the neighborhood and said, we want to live here. So, twenty-four years ago, we actually found a sign laying in the dirt, said, we're going to live on Interlocken Lane and be a part of this community. So, part of that neighborhood traffic drives the businesses and the home values up. So, we need to look at what the local people, and the only people we saw driving to church and going through those neighborhood were going to church, and they were walking or driving. And those ones that weren't going to church, they drove off and went over to the businesses and supported the community. So, I just want to say that we support Breen. We support Burnsville, all the communities that are out there. I know I've worked with Mr. Singh over at the school district and his support of families, communities. Our grandkids are attending Breen now. Our kids attending it, so it's rolling over and actually really doing powerful things. So, we talk about neighborhood traffic, but neighborhood traffic is, drives our home values up, and our home value's gone up because of this community and what Breen's done. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Sorry, don't, and this one, I'm not having to butcher people's names, so this is going much better for me. Thank you. Name and address for record.
My name is Ryan Osselson. That's one of the names you probably would have butchered on the list, so you can take it off. And I live at two zero eight Innsbruck Lane in Burnsville. Good evening, and thank you for your time. For the record, please note that I truly believe in Breen Baptist Church and its mission, its value to the community. its value to the community, and the numerous good works it does are indisputable and highly commendable. However, the issue presently before us is not a referendum on the Buryan organization or its activities. Rather, the issue before us is this: Should Buryan, which presently sits on property that is zoned R1 residential, be allowed to expand the size of their current facilities regardless of the impact the expansion will have on the surrounding residential community? The undeniable fact is that the Buryan expansion will disproportionately affect those who live in the neighborhood. I reside at 208 Innsbrook Lane. The diagram on page 68 of the information packet illustrates that the, that the Buryan property abuts my property on two sides, to the north and to the east. This diagram also depicts that a loading dock will sit a mere 138 feet from my property, actually from the corner of my house, which is about the same distance from home plate to second base on a baseball field. The loading dock is obviously intended to service the 1,046-seat auditorium proposed to sit near my property. One can just imagine the types of traffic this loading dock will see: Large trucks, and possibly even semis, coming at possibly all hours of the day and night with equipment for that huge auditorium stage. Additionally, the parking lot that sits to the north of my property will expand, bringing more noise pollution and dangerous traffic closer to my house. Ever-expanding parking lots and encroaching loading docks that threaten to disrupt my privacy, peace, and quiet are not what I signed up for when I moved into the neighborhood and should not be permitted on properties zoned R1 residential. In summary, I respectfully remind the city and its representatives that the good deeds performed by the Buryan organization, such as those listed on page 174 of the information packet, are not relevant to the zoning and expansion issue at hand. They are simply a distraction and cannot be used to justify the effects the proposed Buryan expansion will have on the homes in Interlochen Woods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, bet thank you. Good evening. My name is Robert Brechner. I live at 14725 Innsbrook Circle, and I've been at that location for 25 years, and I've had the advantage of time to see the growth and changes, and I congratulate Buryan on their success. Any business owner like myself would be thrilled to see that kind of growth. But I am 100% opposed to their expansion and their request. Since their last expansion, the church has grown from a neighborhood church, as we had talked about, into a mega church, and to use Mr. Rose's, uh, version to a campus. For example, just recently, and I don't want to go through the litany, but they do need traffic police, traffic assistance, flagmen, and signs just to hold the church service. How can they continue to do this for all events going forward, especially under an expansion of this magnitude that they are proposing? I just don't see how that is sustainable. Neighbors right now feel the need to avoid the area, and the, and the through-traffic through the neighborhood will continue regardless of the traffic curbing measures, as I've seen over the last 25 years. We live here, it's our home, we don't just come to spend an hour or two on a weekend. We're there seven days a week, and some have home offices there. I'd like to leave you with just this one question for you to contemplate. When you wake up tomorrow and you look out your bedroom window, and you would see within 100 to 200 feet, a structure that's 40 feet high, seats over 1,000 people, attached to a campus-type structure, with all of the issues that go with that as far as traffic, noise, congestion, safety issues, et cetera, and if that's what you would want to see out your window, which is what half a dozen neighbors see out their bedroom window, and about another 50 neighbors will see out their front door, if the answer is no, which I believe it would be for each and every one of us, and men, many of the Buryan members as well, I think that should provide guidance as to how you vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Missed him. Yeah, I know, I know you've been up for once, but just, if you could. Thank you.
Greg Maury, 18 Geneva Boulevard, in Interlochen Woods. Likewise, my wife and I and family have lived in Interlochen Woods for over 25 years, resident of Burnsville for more than 35 years. We empathize with many of our neighbors, and, because we have woods in back of our yard, and the privacy and, you know, shelter of the location is quite nice. Over about 10, 15 years ago, a development went just north of our backyard, and likewise, we took a position contrary to that development. But with the help of the city, the development, and the several neighbors, where we put trees in, got a good view, we worked through it, and it worked out well in the long run. It's a compromised situation, so, but I feel that in view of the plans of the facility, the mitigating factors are quite acceptable, they were out my backyard, quite acceptable over the long haul, and so we worked through it. The actual aspect of the contribution, while it can be dissuaded or minimized, I don't think addresses all of the aspects, because in a communal environment, the ways of many are affected by the ways of everything. And so the positive impact, and the fact that you have to have traffic control and so forth, I think speaks to the situation of the willingness to mitigate annoyances. And so, as I look at an Interlochen Wood resident as well, and working through another building si, site just beyond our backyard, I realize that while it may not always be what we exactly like, it is workable in the long run, and, and we adjust. And I don't think this is, falls even close in that category, because it was the high-rise apartments almost that went in our backyard, which we felt could impact our property and our, of the value of our home. But after, ensuing decade, I don't think it's been that big of a deal. So I want to thank you for your time, and we support the Buryan growth for what it does to the businesses, as well as what we feel, the long-term growth aspects in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Polly Bright. I work for Feed My Starving Children, and I'm a development officer. So my perspective is a little different. My address, my address, sorry, 4151 Lantern Lane in Egan. My perspective is a little bit different, maybe than what others are talking about, but I believe I was asked to speak today just about the impact of the church in this area, and I get an opportunity to work with Feed My Starving Children with a lot of churches and organizations and businesses, as well as Chianti Grill, so that was fun to hear. The impact of a church that's growing and thriving and teaching children to serve is pretty amazing. I believe it strengthens the community. We just came off of a very large event in the South Metro where 23 churches came together, one of, one was Buryan. Buryan has partnered with us for many years and has provided many volunteers. But the big picture, can you imagine that the South Metro came together, 23 churches, and just packed over 3 million meals in six days in the old rainbow? But it's about having that vision that expands beyond the church. It becomes the community. Buryan is a church that invites people in, that teaches our children the importance of serving and loving and living out their faith. That's important to me, that's an important perspective. I think we have to see, growth is difficult and sometimes messy. I love to hear, though, perspectives of neighbors and churches and businesses all coming together to figure this out. That's what we have to do. We all have to do something, and we have to bend a bit. But I'm here to say, I guess, as a character reference for Buryan, to say, they are doing important things in this community that impacts, you know, for us, starving children globally. But to get over 10,000 volunteers together, and their church being one of those, is pretty impressive, and really, I just witnessed the community coming together and doing great things. Without the church, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So we're really grateful for the partnership with Buryan, and hope that continues as a vital part of this community. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Schrader. I live at 14600 Plymouth Avenue. So I, too, like one of the other gentlemen that was up here, have a property line that I share with the church, and potentially a, a future parking lot, so I'd like, think I have more skin in the game than, than some. So, this tends to be an emotional issue, it's very passionate, I think, on both sides, so I'd like to at least give a shout out to Eric and Kay, because they were grateful and gracious, I should say, in meeting with the neighborhood, and they met with us many times, I think four or five times in total. So unfortunately, this is not one of those sort of issues that you can easily compromise on. As a neighborhood, we, we don't want that big structure in our backyard. It's the size of a, of a movie theater. And so I, I get a lot of the things they've, they've attempted to do, to try to make it more manageable, but I think this is just one of those sorts of things that just is not easily sort of compromised on by both sides finding a, a common ground. So nothing against either side. I'm sure if Eric or Kay was my neighbor, we'd get along great, as long as we didn't talk about the church expansion. So, a couple of things maybe just to mention, and I was going to try to take the emotion out of it, and maybe just talk about a few sort of comments or concerns I had, and then some facts and figures. I'm going to try to use real facts, I know alternate facts are in vogue nowadays, but I'm trying to keep them just on, on the regular. So maybe you can give me the benefit of the overhead here, see if I have it.
Usually when I ask really nice to see, they make it happen. Wish that happened at home. She's not watching.
And I didn't bring a character witness for me, but I try, I can find one if we need one for later on, but, so I have really three issues around the, the traffic. One, it was done in August, so I find that at least in my church, in many churches that I've attended, that summer attendance is well off the usual attendance. I think if you, traffic study was done yesterday, the traffic information would be a lot different than it is on August 7th. That's a concern for me, so I think it's understated in terms of some of the numbers. Good Shepherd Church, that church was not, uh, talked to, or not given outside maybe a postcard, so a neighbor and I went up and talked to the president of Good Shepherd. I think actually there's a letter in the packet that you received, so the first time they understood the magnitude of this project was in January. They too were some concerned, I think their letter sort of points that out, but I'm concerned that the traffic study, and I talked to Matt at one of the meetings, and Good Shepherd's traffic was not in scope of this study. And I think when you're looking at all the congestion in that area, you really need to understand what is also Good Shepherd doing, and do they have some growth concerns? And they do. You know, he's been talking with the president, and the other one's at that meeting, they also are starting to feel some pinch, and they're having some growth issues, and so that may also affect traffic, that's not inside this study either. And the last, it was a Sunday only, so there are services on Saturday, there's a big, very well-attended Bible classes on Monday night, because we had a meeting there and the place was packed. There is a, a night, events on Wednesday, so all those things sort of bring a lot of congestion to the neighborhood, and that study was limited. The other thing is, and you probably won't be able to read all of this, but during that August traffic study, attendance was close to 1,700 people for the three services that exist. And they're anticipating that at time of opening, and I just arbitrarily took April, because the church had told me that sometime after Easter is when they hoped to open this in 2018, that would, they had somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,780 attendees. So basically between August of 2016 and April of 2018, their attendance would have gone up 2.8% on an annualized basis. That's after they've been telling us that they've been growing at 30% a year for the last couple of years. So for some reason, their attendance will drop during the construction. So what I did is I took 15%, just as a way of trying to get at actual numbers, of where they were in August of 2016, and on an annualized basis, that would put them at a much higher number, somewhere around 2,100 attendees at time of opening. And then I just did a normal 15% CAGR, and, at 50% CAGR, and basically, they're going to outgrow their parking within two or three years. So I'll quickly step through a couple of these other ones, but in the report that was done, after they get to 1,100 people per service, they're going to run out of space. So then they have to look at alternative methods, such as busing people in from other locations. Their goal, according to the video, was 4,300 people over a weekend, that includes the Saturday service. That's about twice as big as they are now. There's already an increase of over 400 cars per Sunday based on their two-service program that they've, that they suggested they're going to go to, and I can't imagine if you have 2,000 more people, how many more cars entrance and exits you're going to have. The numbers just don't seem to add up very good to me.
So thank, I, I do appreciate your comments, I need you to, to bring it to a close.
Well, let me just jump to, I won't, I'll get to some of the other ones, at least traffic and mitigation plans, and I'll leave it at that. The most alarming one here, and I think Tim is actually on the wall over here, from the church, and we asked about what are they going to do to help when they run out of parking? The suggestion was made by the chair of the elder committee, that they'd go to a third service. So that's sort of disturbing considering the, the traffic study that was done was based on two services, and there's a lot of benefits that were described in that study, and already one of the things being considered if they get too big is to go to a third service. So that feels a little bait and switch to me. So I'll cut my comments, just because we're running out of time, but I just think there's sort of a rush here, and despite all the good work that Buryan does, and despite the good people that are in that church, and I can attest to them, I, I just think this is just too big. The scope is too large, there's too many concerns around traffic and safety that this needs to be denied. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I do respect, I, we're trying to have a, a time limit of three to, three to four minutes, and I would respect if everybody else could, could keep to that time, I appreciate it. I would take the next person that would like to speak. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I'm one of those names you might butcher. Jason, last name is Paul Zine, 421 Woodway, Burnsville. I have a little bit of a unique kind of angle to, to how I ended up at Buryan and supporting them. I'm across the street on the north side of 42, and I look across the street, and I'm in that court that's right on the back of 42. So I overlooked the Christmas tree in the, in the church. I actually love it, obviously I'm a member of the church, but I moved from Faribault, small city, up to Elko New Market to get it between my wife and I's job, and then we started at Buryan when we moved to New Market. When that happened, then I wanted to be here, which, growing up in Northfield and small town, I never wanted to be big city, move up in this area, but I just loved it. It became home, once we came to Buryan, and I loved being in the neighborhood. We actually looked at the detached townhomes, right in the little court, right by the church parking lot, where the proposed new lot is going to be. We looked at Wildwood on the other side. We wanted to stay within a half a mile, right in the church area, because we wanted to be so close to the church. To us, it was worth more money, it was more valuable to us, so I'll keep it really short. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Okay. Who would? Yes, ma'am. Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Beth Chaya. I live at 516 Woodway in Burnsville. If you stand on the rocks in our front yard, we can see the church. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but in listening to everybody, one question came to my mind: What if? What if you were hurting and in need, and you came to Buryan and we said, "Sorry, we don't have room for you"? Or what if you were hurting a young mother and wanted to come to a program, and we said, "Sorry, we have no room for you"? Or a teenager, or an alcoholic man, or... Or anybody that needed us and we said, "Sorry, we can't take you. We have no room for you"? That's not Berean. We exist to serve the community. My husband and I have been members of Berean since 86. I've served in just about every ministry that you could serve in there, from children through senior choir, Bible study, everything. I've seen Berean grow. I love it. That's my church. But what if we have no room? What do we do then?
Thank you. Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Good evening, chair, commission members. Thank you. My name is Angela Sedleczek. I live at 18827 Ibarra Trail in Lakeville. I've been a member at Berean for about four years, which I know is significantly less than a lot of the people that are here tonight. But that is because I'm a military wife and I've moved nine times in 18 years. Because of that, I have the unique perspective of seeing something special. And when we moved here four years ago, Berean was that place and it didn't take long to realize this was a special church. I, for the past three years, have been a leader of 10 high school girls in the church on Wednesday nights. And because of that role that I have, I have the experience that Berean has touched so many lives of youth, high schoolers, all the way down into the preschool age, nursery age, but specifically the high school. We have on a Wednesday approximately 120 teenagers that come to our programming. And the change and the difference that Berean is making in their lives is astounding. I see the needs there. They absolutely need to come on a Wednesday night. There are a lot of pressures in life, as we all know, and as a teenager, it can be difficult. And Berean offers that place of solitude and place of refuge. So, I would just urge you to consider that allowing for this expansion is also allowing for more people's lives to be touched and changed for the better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Phillips and I live at 220 Carriage Lane in Burnsville, which is just short of a block away from Berean Baptist Church. And I'm actually a 20-year resident of Burnsville and also 20-years member of Berean. And I actually grew up in Bloomington and when my husband and I first got married, we live in Richfield. And I was actually introduced to Berean by a Bible study that a gentleman had referenced earlier called BASF. And I was a young mom at the time and I was invited to come because I really needed, I really needed some guidance as a young mom. And so, I drove from Richfield to Burnsville every Monday night and there was 200 to 300 women that attended. And what was interesting to me about what Berean was doing is it was actually opening its doors just as a host church for several different denominations to come together for women to study the Bible together. And it was one of the most inclusive things I had seen and I felt very welcomed. And there was no really benefit to Berean other than it really wanted to create that atmosphere. And so, when my husband and I decided to move, we decided to move to Burnsville for the very reason that I needed a community and it was because of Burnsville, it was because of Berean. I lived on Chicago Avenue for about seven years and I moved to Carriage Lane about 13 years ago. Not, I wanted to actually be closer to Berean and also I can walk to Berean. And I'm just going to say, as a neighbor, I am making a conscious decision to not drive up that road any longer. I will drive around even though it's sort of kind of in my neighborhood, but I also I want to be a very good neighbor, not to mention the impact it had on my family, but I've also worked in student ministries for almost nine years and I've seen the impact that it's had on our young people, not only for junior hires, but also for senior hires. They're getting a lot of conflicting messages out there and for them to come on a Wednesday or a Sunday morning or Monday night and the impact that the gospel is having on these young people is making a tremendous difference. And as Beth had shared, we don't want to shut our doors to more of that community so they can actually hear a message of hope. So, I would highly recommend this expansion. It's great for our community and it's great for the neighbors. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, just once, I think she had raised her hand first. I'll get to you next, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Billman. My address is 3405 Selkirk Drive in Burnsville. I've been a Burnsville resident for 27 years and I want to thank the commission for the great work that you do here. I'm here to express my support for Berean Baptist Church's expansion because of their positive impact on the homeschool community. For the past 15 years, Berean has provided space in their facility for hundreds of junior and senior high school students. I started and ran the business that offers classes for homeschoolers in high school so that they can bridge from learning at home to attending classes at high school. Berean supports, Berean's support for this project by providing access to the facilities on weekdays has given students the opportunities to learn together and prepare for college. Over the years, these 15 years, thousands of students have been educated and benefited through these classes because of Berean's opening their facilities to us. These students now, college graduates and professionals, are giving back to the community and the nation as engineers, medical professionals, teachers, business professionals, attorneys and so forth. The presence of Burnsville in our community has only brought benefits and the expansion of Berean will benefit Burnsville and the surrounding communities in even greater ways for many years to come. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, that's the first time I messed that up. Come on up, sir.
My name is Dave Hook and I was your last.
Welcome back, Mr. Hook.
Thank you. I speak in behalf of a number of issues. And it is trying to put balance in this situation. It's very difficult because you have sides and if you're not on the right side, you can be accused of being on the wrong side very easily. The question is, we want to add to our community, but are we causing congestion by doing this? The question is, we're building a great edifice. It isn't that we're against the church. It isn't that we're against people. We're trying to build a community which has good traffic flow and has good identity. We're talking about our community and what it means to us. There has been a number of people that have made questions about can our identity be retained by having a crowded facility like this? Berean has had a history of having good ministers and in the process, its growth has been spectacular. It's always added value to a community. Its people are of different occupations and they don't always live in our community, but our community is not just that of Burnsville. They've added value to our communities. The question that we have here is, is there going to be too much traffic upon our area? Is this population that's going into a confined area going to be good? We have a question also about the number of handicapped areas and the number of people that are needing those services. We know that approximately what handicap our percentage has been in the past, but now with increased population, how many spaces are being used for the handicapped? How many spaces are being used for the mothers that need special care because they're going to have a birth and a child soon? It isn't we're against these people. It's just we want to make sure we understand what we're building. Our community needs good institutions, good churches, and we have one here and we have many in other locales. It isn't because we're talking about confining a area or talking about restricting a church from growing. The church will grow anyway, no matter where it is. The people are what make it growing and not its location. We have much to be considering here. It is not the question of one location. They're talking about many locations. So, it's a question of having the capacity of our property to its maximum that causes congestion everywhere. A good institution will deliver its product no matter where it's located. It could be located in a farm field and that's not trying to diminishing a farm field or a cornfield. It's trying to say that people will come when the product is there. And one of the problems we have regarding religious things is sometimes we take too much side. You're on my side or you're not on my side. That's not the question. We're trying to add to a community. And the community doesn't mean a town. It means areas. It doesn't mean Burnsville. We're adding to the community. I believe these people will, because of their faith, be par for no matter where they live. They come from different places. So, the question is, is the capacity that we have within the small area size going to be causing problems within our community because of its ability to draw? I don't know that. I'm not that smart. But the question is, we can build congested areas because we have good intentions. But our intentions have to be looking upon what's happening in the future and not now. That's the future. It's being crowded. Our streets are being crowded. It's always going to have its birthplace in Burnsville. The question is, do we have to build something this big in Burnsville? And I don't think so. I'm not against the church. I'm just against where it's building. It isn't a personal thing against me and them. It's a question of where we can do the most impact and buy land and expand it. The church has visions of going beyond where it is now. It has one in south of here, not in your town, but its town south of here. It's going to expand naturally by the number of people it has with it and the growth that it has and the spirit it has within the people. It is not a location. It is a dedication. So, all I got to say here in summary is, we have to evaluate the traffic problem that's going to be caused by this overabundance of building on an area. That is our prime concern. It is not that we're against their message. We're saying work can at best be used for their expansion plans because it's a dynamite church, because it's got dynamite people. They believe in God and they believe in what that could be done through their faith and they'll do it no matter where it is. They got the drive to come from places 30 miles from here to Burnsville. They want the drive from Burnsville to go to another place and they will expand, but my question is, is it going to be too much saturation on the streets of Burnsville? The people will go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'd like, please be respectful of, we have some decisions to make and I would like to limit to have the conversations to discussions that have not already been had previous this evening. I think we've heard, so I would, I'd like to take a few more, but if we could, be very respectful. We have some discussion after this. I think this gentleman in the back. And if you could, sir, please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Brent Burtzle. I am a pastor at Berean Baptist Church and also a resident of Burnsville, 1005 Southwind Drive, just two blocks north of Crystal Lake Beach. I'm speaking primarily because I asked Jeff Mortenson to write on behalf of the church. He is the president and CEO of 360 Communities. I'll just simply read his letter. "To whom it may concern, 360 Communities is grateful for Berean Baptist Church's commitment to strengthening the local community. The people of Berean have a heart for service. Berean Baptist Church remains a trusted partner in providing resources that support families in need. Since 1995, Berean Baptist Church has generously supported 360 Communities and the surrounding neighborhoods in a variety of means. They have provided financial and in-kind gifts through 360 Communities directly to improve the lives of those living in poverty. With Berean Baptist Church's direct support, we are able to strengthen the response to clients dealing with financial crisis. Berean Baptist Church plays a significant role in ensuring that a financial support worker is available at 360 Communities Burnsville Family Resource Center. Furthermore, Berean Baptist Church has been a consistent and generous supporter of providing financial support directly to meet the unique needs of local families in crisis. The strong partnership between 360 Communities and Berean Baptist Church exemplifies the mission of 360 Communities to provide hope and support to people, engaging members of the community to prevent violence, ensure school success and promote long-term self-sufficiency. We look forward to many more years of partnering with Berean Baptist Church. They are an important part of this community. Regards, Jeff Mortenson, President and CEO."
Thank you. Damon, you had your, oh yes, I'm sorry. I knew it was in the front row.
I'll time myself, too.
All right, thank you.
All right, overhead, please. All right. So, first off, I do want to say that churches, mosques, temples and synagogues all play a role within the community. Interlocking Woods, the neighbors that I've talked to, no one is questioning Berean's value and no one wants Berean to leave. Our opposition may have been different to Berean expansion had we been included from the very beginning. It was a miscalculation by not involving us a year ago. This project's been in that mode of planning for a year. So, I look at the conditional use permit. I'm not a commissioner, but I'd like to be. And I can tell you that the conditional use permit here says that it's designed to allow flexibility within zoning laws. And if I can paraphrase, the CUP gives a zoning authority discretion to allow uses otherwise prohibited in specific district for the benefit of the neighborhood. So, let's just talk about the benefit of the neighborhood. I see it as being a hazard, a real hazard, for the 53 children in the neighborhood. Right here is the location of the pedestrian access to the park where many of those kids play. So, we made a compromise back in 2000, we felt we did, when the new asphalt was put in, more impervious, more impervious than exists over at the Byerly's Shopping Center. So, and now we're going to add more parking, more asphalt, and we're going to alter the essential character of Burnsville Woods or of Interlocking Woods. You can see how wooded the area is. Many of the homeowners purchased homes in this area because of the wooded lands, heavily wooded, as one of the commissioners said tonight. So, I could put four community churches in over the top of this footprint of Berean right now. And the auditorium addition, I can tell you, I've been given a quote from a Realtor. And he said, "The planned expansion of the Berean Baptist Church will have a definite impact on the current homeowner values that live on Plymouth, Innsbruck Lane and other surrounding streets. At this time, the parking lot isn't bad to look at from Innsbruck, but as a Realtor, I can tell you, I can definitely tell any homeowner that the large structure in the planned spot will have definite effects on the sales of their homes." planned spot will have definite effects on the sales of their homes in that area." So now I go back to the CUP. It alters the essential character, the expansion alters the essential character of the locality. It negatively impacts the homeowner's values and it does not result in safety improvements and quite the opposite, it creates a hazard. So I ask myself, is this for the benefit of the neighborhood? And I say, it's really hard for me to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and then I'll get, I'll take, no, go ahead, I'll get to you next, sir.
You're behind me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Jake Hillby, live at 112 Geneva Boulevard. I've been living in the neighborhood for about 10 years now. And I just want to say, you know, the neighbors are great, right? The church is fantastic as far as the number of people who are out here tonight, it's very impressive, right? But I want to say, there's only so many of us living in this neighborhood, right? But you can see from the number who have turned out, it is quite an important issue to us. And so I don't want to deny, I don't think anybody's saying that the church is going away or shrinking or should shrink. I think we're just talking about traffic, right? Safety and some traffic issues. I think there was a nice proposal by Councilman Steve Levy regarding maybe there's a different allocation that could be done. And I just don't think everything's been done here from the church's perspective or from our, I guess from our perspective, that the church has done enough to consider some other alternatives here. And so I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Damon.
All right, good evening. Damon Lolliberry, 14609 Innsbruck Lane. It's good to be here again. And Commissioner, I wanted to more specifically address your question you posed to staff earlier about the satisfaction of some of the efforts to negotiate with the neighborhood since we last met. And I think you've heard some of that tonight. We're not satisfied. We came to this meeting on the 9th with four main concerns. Then it had to do with size and scope, it had to do with traffic, and it had to do with safety. So you look at the four minor, I'll call them cosmetic changes that were made to their original plan that was in front of you on the 9th. So we removed an access, we eliminated some, three stalls to maintain a 30-foot setback. We added some landscaping to the south side, which is where this largest piece will be built, which was glaringly omitted from the original plan. And we put a fence, which we didn't really request or suggest a fence, they just kind of put a fence there. So those things really have not addressed our concerns. And really, there's been no recognition of the impact that this has on our neighborhood from the church. These meetings, while maybe intended to be in good faith with us, really were just an opportunity for them to tell us what they were going to do and why they should be able to do it. Okay? So let's talk about size and scope. So 41 foot, four inches. So since the 23rd, when we met with the architect and the church, the structure's grown 10 inches. It was 46 at that time, we were told. But nonetheless, I'm 174 foot from the property line, it doesn't come any closer to my property line. But the closest point of that structure today is from one of their original expansions of about 18 feet high. So now you're going to come to that same point and be 40 foot. And so I kind of respectfully disagree with the size being unique to our area. If you look at the overhead, I was one of the individuals that requested the 40-foot sized buildings in Burnsville. And I think you can see that the city has been very thoughtful in where they put those. They're in the heart of the city, they're in the commercial corridor west of 35W, and they're in what I'll call the hospital area, okay? And you take a look at those, they're in high-density areas, they don't empty onto or have access from a residential area. And you look at, this includes Berean currently and our Risen Savior that has no residential access. In terms of traffic, I just want to make clear that traffic has been a concern and an issue for an ongoing amount of time, and their efforts around traffic mitigation, which are sandwich board signs and volunteers, started one month ago. They started one month ago when they realized, oh man, we haven't done what we probably need to do. So somebody talked about the expansion in 2000 and all the promises having been kept since that time. I just, I respectfully disagree with that. You talk about moving to 4,300 attendees, you take the number of people per car, even if they cut the traffic flow from 5%, if it stays at 5%, that's still over 100 cars a weekend. Cut it to 2%, that's still 43 cars. It's too much traffic on a narrow Innsbruck Lane. So I'll close in just a moment. I'll also say that those traffic mitigation efforts, which I don't find as a particularly effective long-term strategy, they don't happen on Monday nights when they have Bible study, they don't happen on Wednesday nights when they have religious education. And I know that the church intends to not use their property differently with additional events in the future, but I think reality is a lot different than what they intend. So when I bought my property in 2013, I researched how this property was zoned. And I think I had a reasonable expectation based on the zoning that somebody wouldn't build a small Ames Theater in my backyard, okay? Somebody talked about the public access to Interlocken Park off of our street. I'll just, I'll show you this. These are my two boys, so I'll pause for audible fawning, okay? I'll tell you what, on Saturdays and Sundays, I will not walk south on Innsbruck to go to that public access because of the church traffic. I will walk up the berm, through the southeast corner of the parking lot, down the berm to the back to go to Interlocken Park, okay? So this is a neighborhood that's changing over. We've got people that are retiring and we have young families that are moving in. And I will tell you, if you fast-forwarded to today and you had that structure and you had what inevitably is going to be more traffic on Innsbruck Lane, I as a young family would have made a decision to look elsewhere, and I think others will. So we'd ask that you, and ultimately the council if necessary, protect the integrity of that zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to add that we haven't already heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. My name's Kay Larson. My address is 16658 Fallbrook Court, Farmington, Minnesota. I've been on staff at Berean for eight years and for the last two have served as the Managing Director of Church Operations. So back in 1992, when my husband and I moved to the area, we were looking for a place close to his work, so we chose Farmington. Then we started looking for a church. And our two criteria, or two of the criteria, I should say, were close to home and similar in size to the small churches that we grew up in. And somehow we ended up at Berean. And we just kept coming back there. And a lot of that had to do with, every Sunday, we were challenged at the end of service to be the living church out there. And what they were talking about was, don't just come to church and be here on Sunday morning. Make a difference in your community, make a difference in your churches or in your neighborhoods and your schools where you work. Be, live differently than the rest of the world. And I think how that's translated, you've heard all these different stories about the good works that Berean has done. And that's great, that's counter, kind of intuitive to what we're used to. We're not used to boasting of good works, that's not what we're about. But it has manifested in some really amazing stuff happening in terms of what happens with our outreach to the community, outreach globally. And when I think about expanding, again, this is, from what Eric said, this is more than a building. It does enable an opportunity for more people to come and an opportunity for us to grow our efforts and to make a bigger difference. And when I think about having a growing, thriving, living church in an area, that's a huge thing. I know when you look at Burnsville, you think about it as always being a growing, living, thriving thing, right? You don't want to see things start to die off. And so this continues to bring new, young families in and excitement. As Managing Director, we, I have had a lot to do with the response to the concerns that were shared on January 5th or 4th at that First Neighborhood Meeting that was held here at the City Hall. You can call it a response or you could call it a reaction, but I would say regardless of that, it ended up in results. In the two-plus years that I've served as Managing Director, the only interaction that I've had with any of the neighbors was in results to having some trees that needed to be trimmed back. We have really worked on our internal controls to say, hey, if somebody calls in the office, make sure you direct the calls appropriately, not to say that somebody maybe hasn't called and said, hey, we've got traffic. But I had not heard of it and certainly not to the degree that it was shared until January 4th. So when I went back to the church the next day, we did make some immediate adjustments. And one of those was an email to the entire faith family at Berean and said, look, we want to be good neighbors. We do not want to be counteractive to our witness by making them crazy, you know? And so please change your travel routes. We also immediately put up some sandwich signs. We hoped to eventually make those permanent, but that was what we were able to do at the time. That would again remind people, because sometimes when you've traveled a route for so many times, you kind of forget and you get up there and you're like, oh yeah, I'm not supposed to go this way. So go down to Grand or go back to Portland and please come in. And we saw some immediate reactions. So we're in the retraining mode. And so this last weekend, we had a total of five cars. That was the traffic implication for the neighborhood, five cars that went in and out. And I do feel like it can be completely eliminated as we continue to train our congregation, because as I said before, we do not want to have an adversarial relationship with our neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. We want them to come to church at Berean, you know? And we want to have relationships that will go longer. Also, I just want to make a note that, by the way, if you would happen to Google directions on how to get to Berean and you were coming from the south, it would direct you to go directly through Interlocken Woods. And we have made an appeal to Google to please change that. And so that was something that was set up not completely out of our control, but hopefully that will change. I also would like to make a statement. In October of 2015, we first approached the city of Burnsville about hiring a police officer to basically be on our campus, on our premises. And there were two purposes. One was security and one was to help us out with traffic. I can't necessarily say which one was the greater at the time. There was a lot happening with different churches in the area and we wanted to make sure, you know what, we're on County 42, it's a really busy area, there's bus stops there, you just don't know what could happen. And so the police officer was put there not because we had a traffic problem, but we've certainly used them and we've appreciated his little switchy thing that he has where he can control the light. That's been beneficial to both us and Good Shepherd. So lastly, if I could have an overhead shot. Oh, so sorry. 54 years ago, that was what they were looking at when they were finding the location for Berean. They had no idea what the possibilities were at the time. And I sit here and think about, you know, we've got about 17 acres. As good stewards, we need to use this acreage that they had back then to its fullest and make sure that we are making the biggest impact we can. And I hope that in doing that, we can be good neighbors, that we can make sure that we're setting in the controls in place to make also an impact there. I know that we haven't been perfect, but we'll do better. I'm sorry, thank you for your time.
Yeah, I'll take, yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Deb Cliff, I live at 1316 Orchard Drive in Burnsville. I've lived in Burnsville for nearly 30 years. I am not a member of Berean and I came here as a neutral person because I wanted to hear about this, because I do know people at Berean, I have friends there. And I have been there before several times over the years, but I am not a member of Berean. I just want to say quickly that, number one, the essential character of Burnsville has changed a lot in the last 30 years since I moved here. When I moved here, it was Fairview Ridge's, Byerly's, and that's really all I remember, coming from Nebraska and the city. I lived in the city and we moved up here and it was like, wow, there's nothing here but trees, which, we love the trees, right? The other thing I wanted to say is that the traffic on my street, I live off of County Road 5, and it's increasing still. Traffic is increasing in Burnsville, that's just a fact. And I just wanted to say that. I just really, after listening to everybody, I just really felt like I needed to say that.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to add that would be, that we have not already heard the topic? I applaud everybody's comments and I greatly appreciate if we could limit any more comments to something that we already haven't heard. So could I take a couple of more? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Bowles and I live at 14604 Plymouth Avenue on the corner. And I just want to comment on something that Commissioner Levy said earlier. You are very right to notice that there is a place at the bottom of the hill when you approach the opening to the Berean parking lot that is extremely dangerous. Putting a parking lot on the west side of that street at the bottom of a hill, which is kind of blind as you come down the hill, is extremely dangerous. There is nothing in this plan that addresses that danger, nor is there anything that really addresses the excessive traffic in the neighborhood. We have not had any traffic control until January by the Berean. I personally, and the lady who doesn't think has made any calls, I have called every April, every September, and every one week after Thanksgiving to the Berean to complain about the traffic. Why those times? Because that's when the traffic picks up. I always got a polite response. Someone said, oh, I'm either sorry and I will take care of it or we'll talk to our people, or someone said, I'll pass it on. Nothing ever got done. I'm a person who believes in, if you don't learn from history, you're doomed to repeat it. And I don't for one second believe that after this is all over and they get the okay, that the traffic is not going to go right back to where it was, because there's nothing enforceable in what they're presenting. And I have to live there, or maybe I don't, but I'd rather stay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, did you take a couple more? Yes, go ahead.
All right. Hi, Dan Colgan, 231 Carriage Lane, Burnsville. Been a resident of Burnsville for, gosh, 26 years. I'm going to give a correlating story. We grew up, I grew up in Rochester, grew up in a cul-de-sac and we had an open field that we built a baseball field for the neighborhood. The kids got together, built a field, we built a golf course there. And about five years later, the city of Rochester decided to build a school across our street. So the story goes is that traffic increased, we had school buses going up our street, we had 41 kids in our neighborhood that were under the age of 10 at that time. And my story is, is that change happens. Neighborhoods change. There's progress that takes place in a city, in a community. And when I think back of how many students went through that school system at that junior high school, me being one of those, we sacrificed our neighborhood for the sense of progress, for that education for those kids. This is a similar situation. We grew up in that home, that was my home. And I appreciate the neighbors that live in the neighborhood because that's their home. Another correlating situation is, is that like many members such as myself, we've probably spent almost equal to our mortgage in contributions to Berean, because it's our home. We believe in it. We've sacrificed income to support the ministries and the activities of Berean. Like our residents that live in the neighborhood, which have spent money, have a mortgage, have put an investment into their homes, we also, at Berean, which we considered at our home, we've made an investment in that property, an investment that we felt would grow and develop as Burnsville has, as a community, being progressive, being inclusive. And I feel that to squelch this project would be not something that Burnsville tends toward because we're a progressive community. And I believe that the number of families that call this their home still want to do that in the next 20, 30, 50 years. We're not here for five or six years, we're going to be here for another decade times five. So thanks for your interest, thanks for your listening, and appreciate your decision.
Thank you. Sir, and I do appreciate, please, can you, something that we haven't already heard?
For his reputation?
Come up and please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Michael Gnee. My family and I live at 1925 West 92nd Street, which you recognize is not in Burnsville, it's in Bloomington. So thank you for letting me cross the river. When my wife and I moved to the South Metro, she worked in Hopkins and I was self-employed and I worked all over the city. So my was flexible in where I lived, but my wife desperately wanted to live north of the river because she worked at Hopkins. I desperately wanted to live south of the river, I wanted to live in Burnsville. And I wanted to live in Burnsville for a couple of reasons. One, because of the hospital network, because of the One, because of the hospital network, because of the mall, County Road 42. I had a brother lived in Prior Lake. And also because of Berean's reputation. Berean's reputation spreads across the river. My daughter attended South Heights Homeschool Co-op, which Michelle had talked about earlier. My children attended VBS long before I made Berean my home. So, Burnsville as a city has an incredible reputation. The malls, the hospital, the churches all contribute to what makes Burnsville an extremely attractive community. So, thank you for your willingness to do your job as a planning commission to further the reputation of Burnsville, which I believe Berean is a large part of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. If you could help us move the meeting along, I'd appreciate it.
Can I make it real quick? I've got a little graphic. And let's see if it'll show up here. Try and rotate my screen.
Can I have your name and address for the record, sir?
Randy Rail, 14912 First Avenue, South in Burnsville. And if you take a look at the map here of approximately where we are, this is where I live.
You're going to have to move it around a bit.
Sorry. Let's go down just a little bit. Okay, so this is approximately where I live. You heard other residents talk that live right here. This is Innsbruck that goes up. Plymouth is here. When we were asked to start making a change, I should mention, tonight is 13 years that we've lived in Burnsville. We moved in tonight, 13 years ago. One of the reasons we did move to Burnsville was to be closer to Berean. And so, instead of when we go to church, coming up and going up Portland and going south across up Innsbruck here, in Plymouth into Berean's parking lot there, we are making the sacrifice of going an additional route. It's not far and a lot of other people are. But just to show you on the graphic what the difference is, we go all the way over here, up Grand, around and over. And it would be akin to asking people in this neighborhood, instead of coming out when they go down Innsbruck and going left and going up to Byerly's for groceries, to going up and around and all the way over here, we make a sacrifice. You heard them say, "There's only five cars, multiple Sundays now." And really, the traffic, honestly, I've traveled this route for 13 years. I've been one of those Sunday morning offenders because it's easier for my family and I to go up Innsbruck. And the reality is, is that all of the years that I have traveled that road, there is more traffic on that road when one of the residents in the neighborhood hosts a garage sale than there is on Sunday morning. And that's the truth. We make an effort to go around. When my wife and I first moved to this area, we did look at homes in and along Geneva. And we still enjoy a Sunday drive out of the church, going through the neighborhood because Berean's a very pretty city. We love to drive around the neighborhoods. It's a beautiful area. That whole area through Geneva is great. And, you know, I really don't want to have to change enjoying my community. It is a way for me to go back through there, but I have made that sacrifice and you've heard other people say that. And really, that's the biggest thing to say. We do make a change. And for those that think, oh, you know, as soon as this project is done, that we're going to go back to the way we were as far as Berean attenders, we're not. Berean is a solid church. We respond to the needs that are brought up to us. We respond to the things that are asked of us and we make changes. And Berean works very hard to do everything they can for the good of the community. And I've seen that for years and years and years. And I would encourage you to move forward for this on Berean's behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Something new. We do need to have some discussion and try to move this forward, so.
My name is Ann Christ. I live 1820 Slater Lane in Burnsville. We are new to your fair state. We are from California. When we first bought our first home after we were married, we went on a vacation in the beautiful mountains that are the Sierras. And we came back to the wooded area that was directly behind our home and it was gone. It was plowed down and a rest home was put right up next to our fence, which my husband went to the planning commission because he didn't believe the easements are right. As an engineer, he understands those things. It is sad. When you're served lemons, make lemonade. We made that rest home an asset. When we got up on our pool deck, we looked right into those people's windows and those dear senior citizens there were staring at us out on the deck and making comments about us as we were swimming in our pool. But, you know, it was turned around and my senior aunt ended up in that rest home. And we were very close to her. So, sometimes we only look at the negative. We had to put up with those people making comments we could hear over our fence, excuse me, as we swam in our pool with our children. We're brand new to Minnesota and we were struggling in an area. And we went and visited Berean. They've taken us in. We're not even members and they've taken us in and surrounded us and supported us. I understand how it feels to have a commercial site being put right behind your fence. We couldn't even walk out our gate and they let all the wild berries which grow in Sacramento, California, go right in between our fence and we had to trim them and keep them out of our pool. But we made lemonade. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jake Chaya, 516 Woodway, Burnsville. Heard from my wife a little earlier, so she took all my thunder. But there's two things that I wanted to mention. Within a square mile of Berean, there's four mega churches and two other smaller churches. And they're all growing. As we look at what's happening there, for some reason, our church is growing. And I think the reason why is we are a church of five generations. We have the 80-plus, 60-plus, 40, 20, and the zero-plus. And they keep coming. We can't tell them, "Don't come anymore." We have to keep bringing them in because they come to us with needs specifically in a generation they're in. So, all those churches are growing in that area. There's some reason why God has anointed that area to have that many people come to church on a Sunday. That's His way of doing things. Our way is just to obey and do the things He's called us to do, to be a steward. So, I thank you for the opportunity to speak and I pray you make the decision that is closest to God's will. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and address.
Yeah, that's C. Brechner and I'm at 14725 Innsbruck Circle, Burnsville. I'm in the Interlock and neighborhood. My church is the large one just east of here, Risen Savior. The only thing different could be seating occupancy, but it doesn't share an R1 entrance with a 60-home neighborhood. That's one large difference. I like being next to a church. I feel like I have two churches in my community. I guess what I'm saying here is I think it's more about size and location. It's not who you are and what you do. We all worship and we all like to go to our place. And we all have extended worship. We all have the church in Haiti. We do great outreach. But I do think if the mayor is sitting here and she's wondering how you're going to take care of this gap, she's going to ask for solutions. I don't know that we've heard a lot about solutions. We've heard about redoing traffic studies and negotiating or compromising on exits. But she's going to want solutions. And I know, because I read my local paper, the Performing Arts Center is trying to make a profit. And it is very similar in size to this church community here that sits at the top of my neighborhood. Approximately 1,000 seats. The parking is already there and they need the profitability. This church needs the space and I just wanted to throw out a solution. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Thank you for everyone's comments this evening. We need to, just a little bit about procedures. We need to have some discussion amongst the commissioners. And I do want to remind everybody that we are just an advisory board. We are not unelected. Our piece is to look at the application that was presented in front of us. We are volunteers. We do this for fun. We have to look at it from both sides. And I do appreciate everyone's comments this evening. Actually, I think we're very lucky to have the community that has come together to try to make a better decision here. But we have some limitations as to what we can look at and I think you may see some of that in our discussion. So, with that, I will start with our commissioners. Who would like to speak first? Commissioner Levy.
I'll jump in. I would like to propose an additional condition that the applicant evaluate the potential of rotating the west parking lot to a north-south orientation and moving Plymouth Avenue further to the west to go around that parking lot to mitigate some of the pedestrian safety issues that have been presented.
Commissioners, other comments on Commissioner Levy's additional condition and moving Plymouth Avenue?
I would ask if that's feasible.
Staff?
Commissioners, we would have to evaluate it. I mean, it's feasible to study. We can absolutely come up with a cost and see. I mean, there's horizontal and vertical curve requirements for roadways at 30 miles per hour, so we can absolutely evaluate it and report back our findings on that.
Other questions? Other comments? Not everybody can speak at once. At some point, Commissioner Levy will have to get to a vote where that'll be an up or down vote. I would be, I guess I'll start as a commissioner. That's truly not in our realm of suggestions. Our commission doesn't have the ability to alter streets typically.
I'm not asking for altering. I'm asking for studying the feasibility of making that change that might mitigate some of the concerns that have been presented.
And that's why we'll have to have an up or down vote for that, for that condition to move forward. That's typically not what is something that happens at this point from a standpoint of what time has been put in with the applicant and with staff. Commissioner Levy, do you have any other additional comments?
Nope, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Workman, or Commissioner Walter, you've raised your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, first of all, want to thank everybody for a very respectful tone tonight. There's a lot of passion and a lot of energy in this room. And I think it's obvious that whatever we decide tonight, not everybody's going to leave City Hall pleased. We're just one step in this process. And again, thank you all for being here. I, you know, from a silver lining perspective, I think tonight has been very educational for me because I, you know, I've learned a lot about Berean Baptist Church and what it adds to the community. And I've seen a neighborhood that has a lot of passion about their community as well. I do think, I was impressed with some, since the last hearing, some of the discussions on the traffic management issues, which I think is our, like Commissioner Singh, that's been my top concern about this. So, I'm just going to leave my comments at that.
Okay. Commissioners, other comments? Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Commissioner Workman, you raised your hand.
Age before youth. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this has been a very tough one for me. I live walking distance from Berean and I know that neighborhood very well. As Commissioner Walter said, my top concern since the last meeting was traffic. I am not sure what has been proposed has taken away that concern from me. It's still high up in my decision-making process that I have to take into consideration. I think what makes a neighborhood? People make a neighborhood. I remember when I was interviewed for this job, for this volunteer position over nearly eight years ago or more, one of the things I told the city council members who interviewed me that what I'm concerned, what are my main concern is livability issue of any community. And I still maintain that because I don't want to live in a community that I'm not happy because of something. If I buy a home in that community, I do my homework and study it and buy a home and then something happens that make me very unhappy. That's not why I live in a community. I live in a community to be happy. I've heard so much said about what Berean Baptist Church brings to our community. And I said that in the last meeting. I appreciate that. They're doing a great, great, great job. Many other churches do the same. But that's not the concern that we have to take. That's not what we have to take when making a recommendation to the city council here. At this point, I don't know where, which way I'm going to go. I feel in my heart that people in that neighborhood are not quite happy at this point with the expansion of Berean Baptist. And I feel for these people. So, Mr. Chair, I want to just say to you and members of the commission that I'm still concerned about the traffic and I'm concerned about the impact this expansion would have on the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Workman, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and expressing your stories and opinions about what was in front of us tonight. I echo what Commissioner Walter and Commissioner Singh both said. Traffic is the largest issue here. One thing that I've taken away more so is that Berean didn't have to put in traffic controls, doesn't have to do a lot of the things that everyone said they have to do as of the last couple of months. They've chosen to do those things. And I look at that as a sign of looking forward, of proactively trying to stop the problems that we've heard. I've known people, I've lived here my whole life, that have come up through the church and listening to the leadership from the church and seeing their acknowledging of the issues. I hope that the problems that are being addressed now will be continued, the attention stays on those problems and we can continue to be proactive. With regards to how we vote, we're tight. We can't bring in our emotions and feelings into it. We're a recommending body. So, with those things said, I will say that I will be voting in support of staff recommendation to move this to the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioner Benke?
Thank you, Chair. Like some of you, I've lived here a long time. Like Commissioner Workman, I've lived here almost my whole life, 50 years now. I've seen change. I've watched the churches grow, a number of them. Quite honestly, I am here because I think Burnsville needs to grow and needs to continue to grow with direction. This is a technical decision on my part because that is our purview. We are looking at it technically against the code and the ordinances. And unfortunately, I'm struck with a problem. I'm struck with a problem, essentially a math problem, that generates a problem for the neighborhood and traffic, and I see it as a direct result of the proposal. So I unfortunately will not be voting for this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Walter, other comments?
Nope.
I, like the rest of the commissioners, struggle with this immensely. I asked to be on this board because I wanted to be able to give my time to be able to, I think, make the best decision. We try to go at these things, and if this was a neighbor next to mine. On one side of the fence, we have a church that has owned this property since 1963. We have a community that placed an easement on them and put a street through their property that they own and caused kind of undue strain on the property. On the flip side, I do understand the plight of the neighbors and the sheer amount of traffic, and I struggle with that. I had questions in reference to movement of traffic, and I, as in the last meeting, I spent a fair amount of time in the parking lot during switching of services. And I'm very concerned about what we're doing to County Road 42 and what the traffic is also doing to County Road 42 and how we keep traffic on the property and not cause an issue on 42. We, I'm not comfortable that that has been solved either from a standpoint of what we're doing there. I by no means am in any way, shape, or form trying to take away from what Berean is doing at this point in the community. I think we're very lucky to have them, but from where I look at this from a standpoint of a commission, I'm still very concerned about what's happening with traffic. There was comments made about things at the Ames Center, and I'll be very honest with you. I've worked traffic at the Ames Center as a volunteer for the Mobile Volunteer Network, so we have to have people in place to manage people walking across the street at an Ames event. So I'm very cautious of that, too. So this is not an easy decision of mine, but at this point, from what I have been given from a standpoint of solutions based around traffic, traffic on Plymouth, traffic on 145th, and traffic out to 42, for the greater good, I can't be in supportive of this application at this time, given those issues. And I know that irritates part of the room, but I just need people to understand where I'm coming from, from a standpoint of, I believe we have to look at, how can we take this property and do what the church needs to do, but also not put other people at risk? So I would not be in support of this application as it stands. We do have a housekeeping, I guess I'll go back to some other people, I'm sorry. So Commissioner Singh, do you have any further comments?
No, Mr. Chair.
We have a suggestion with Commissioner Levy that we add an 18th condition about, I just want to make sure Commissioner Levy, and I was trying to write as you were talking, so you mentioned something about realigning the west lot?
Evaluating the feasibility of realigning the west lot to a north-south configuration and moving Plymouth Avenue west of that new area, that parking area.
So Commissioner Levy, at this time, I guess I would need you to follow up, and we'll get that recommendation on the floor. So would you like to make a motion with...
I move that we add that, what I just said, as an 18th condition.
So...
Chair.
Go ahead.
As an alternate, I'm not sure, can you make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. He cannot. I'm sorry, everyone is here. I apologize. Thank you for that information. I apologize. We do have an alternate here for when we have situations of when the commission is not a complete group. Commissioners, other comments, or I would stand for a motion at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to incorporate Commissioner Levy's idea as an 18th item on the plan, and just see if it's feasible, and if it's not.
We have a motion on the floor to, if I understand this correctly, to recommend to the city council approval of the CUP with the addition of an 18th condition. Am I stating that correctly, Commissioner Workman?
That sounds good to me, Mr. Chair.
We do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And the motion fails three to two. Do you have the division of the House? Commissioners, I would stand for another motion.
For approval?
Approval or denial.
Want to do that again?
You can't.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that the commission recommend, hold on. The planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the requested CUP amendment, variance, and plating except the CUP for reduced parking and to allow proposed, the proposed up-to-10-foot-tall vinyl chain-link fence with fabric. The following conditions for approval are recommended as listed. Sorry, butchered that a little bit.
You can just mention the 18 conditions as listed. Seventeen, I'm sorry, 17 conditions as listed.
Including the 17 conditions as listed, yep.
We have a motion on the floor that is different from the first motion without the addition. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, and the motion fails three to two. Okay. Commissioners, I would stand for another motion.
Someone else's turn.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benke.
I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council denial of the requested CUP amendment, variance, plating except the CUP for reduced parking to allow the proposed up-to-10-foot vinyl chain-link fence and the enumerated 17 conditions.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Benke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Nay. And the motion passes three to two. This will go in front of the city council on February 21st. Is that, I'm sorry, yeah, February 21st, in front of the city council with all of our background, all of the information that was presented this evening. And so can we hang on just one second, before everybody leaves? We just have one quick thing, and then we'll adjourn because it'll take us a while to get the council. Can you do me that one favor? And that takes us to our next item on our agenda, which is updates.
Yes. So the next planning commission meeting is canceled, that's February 27. However, in its place, we'll have the Comp Plan Advisory Committee meeting here at City Hall at 6:00 PM. So not only the members of the planning commission, but the members of the advisory panel, as well as members of the public are always welcome to attend.
Will you send out an notice?
We will send out an agenda and packet of information prior to the meeting so you can adequately prepare. The topic itself is on housing this month, or this month.
Commissioners, other updates?
Is our next meeting the 6th of March, then? Or is that TBD?
It would be the 6th. It would be one after that.
13?
It'll be announced.
I'll wait.
March 13.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Workman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you, and have a good evening.